I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next Board of Education is on Tuesday, May 28th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Belated Happy Mother's Day to many of those around the table, listening in the audience, our staff. Hope all of you had a chance to celebrate. As many of you are aware, the district has received some press recently. I and the other members of the Board will not be commenting further on the current investigation at Middlesex Middle School as employee investigations are the responsibility of the superintendent. Additionally, in certain cases, Board members may be called upon to make related judgments, and it's inappropriate for the Board to act in any way that would call its impartiality into question. So if you've called us about it, it's distinctly unsatisfying because our answer is we have nothing to say. That said, on behalf of the Board of Education, I wish to affirm the commitment of the Board and the Superintendent to assuring that our students and staff can learn and teach in a school environment in which they feel safe, secure, and free from antisemitism and any other forms of hate. In terms of our meeting tonight, I wish to thank all of the staff who've worked hard to prepare significant amounts of information for tonight's discussion. This is close to a budget book. Given the amount of important content we have to cover tonight, I ask all presenters to take about five to seven minutes to hit the highlights of their presentations so Board members have a little time to ask questions following. We have a mix of presentation type tonight. Some of the discussions we're having are purely informational, others are in preparation for future decisions. I recommend we, as a Board, prioritize the time we spend on the conversations leading to Board decisions. And with that, I will open it to public comment.
Good evening. If anyone in person would like to participate in public comment, please come up to the podium and wait for the chair to recognize you. If anybody online would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to comment. Please note the time with the chair. We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you. I'll move to the Superintendent's report, Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being in person here. Welcome to our staff members this evening and to members of the public who are joining us. I just would like to recognize Anika Mangwell, the U.S. Secretary of Education. Miguel Cardona just announced this week that Anika, one of our high school seniors, is a 2024 U.S. Presidential Scholar recipient. Anika is one of 161 outstanding American high school seniors who have demonstrated academic excellence, achievement, certainly artistic excellence, that's for sure for Anika, technical expertise, leadership and citizenship, service, and all sorts of other attributes and contributions to the greater school community. Anika has also designed a district logo that had come before as I just, it went to the Communications Committee and we'll bring it to the Board, but want to offer Anika congratulations. I think they were, they used to take the kids down to the White House, but they're having a wee online ceremony, so I don't think they've got over COVID just yet. The processes, and I think that's a wee bit disappointing, but there were, makes it no less proud of Anika for her representation of herself, her family, Darien Public Schools in the town of Darien. You know what, she's not here tonight, we'll find a way, but I think a wee round of applause for her would have been appropriate. Also, we have a high school junior this evening. I have a few recognitions for students. Rajiv Pedura competed in the National Academic B Competition. It was a six-round buzzer beater competition from high school and college topics. And last weekend, Arlington, Virginia, Rajiv won first place and was a national champion. So I'm sorry, but you're going to have to applaud again for him. And Saturday, the last week in April, we had eight students who were part of the Darien Chapter of Technology Association, and they competed in the Annual State Conference. I thought that was in Killenley High School in Connecticut. Sashi Mehta took first place in music production. Anouska Michelle took third place in the music production category, and together Sashi and Shushka took first place in the coding category. So again, congratulations to those students. Our IDA students all placed in the top 10 in the final Word Masters Challenge of the Year. Word Masters is a popular thing with our IDA program and our students, so we can, we express our words of congratulations and appreciation to them. We also had three teams from middle school Quiz Bowl who traveled to Chicago for the Nationals, and we're thrilled to say that the three teams performed admirably. Our A Team, Anika Bansal, Jasper Grohl, Dylan Banondo, and Zoe Unesent placed fifth in the nation. So congratulations to everyone associated with the Quiz Bowl and all of the staff members and parents who supported the program. And also, I'd like to offer a wee words of congratulations to Mrs. Tramontano's fourth grade class, who published a book on precepts, just words of advice from a 10-year-old. Here it is, published. If you don't mind, I didn't bring the kids along, but I did give you a few words of advice from a 10-year-old this evening, if you don't mind. If you find something you love, do not let anyone stop you from doing it. Don't let mean words bring you down, let them make you stronger. You only live once, so do it when you have the chance. Life is like a book, don't skip the pages. You can't be a butterfly if you don't spread your wings to kindness. And just one more, roses are red, violets are blue, you should love you for you. But congratulations to the kids and Mrs. Armentano's class, fourth grade class. The P&amp;Z are meeting tonight to request our lease, request for the Thordale Circle parking spots for the student transportation vehicles, so look forward to hearing back from the P&amp;Z. We've had staff and parents participated in the HHR overview and updates on the phasing of the particular projects. Tomorrow morning, we head back to the Henley community. We have already conducted the staff and the parent meetings at the homeschool, so tomorrow will be Henley with our staff in the morning, immediately followed by parents who will receive a wee update from ONG, KGND, the Building Committee and Administration from Central Services. We also have the meet and greets for the Henley staff and parents. For Mr. Ross Cooper, he will be coming on Thursday, be introduced to the students, to the staff, and also to parents at a parent gathering at 6:30. Mr. Christopher Malillo has been introduced up at Ox Ridge this past week, and he was well received by teachers and parents alike. The Board of Finance will consider the end-of-year deficit and security appropriations at their May 21st meeting. I would just like to finalize a meeting with the Facilities Committee on Thursday morning, so if you see me just before you go, if we can just get a quorum for that, I would like to just complete one agenda item. The Communications Committee is going to meet this Friday morning, and thereafter, the Finance Committee meeting subcommittee is on May 23rd. That concludes my announcement. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Student representative reports.
Good evening, everyone. We are in the second week of AP exams here at the high school, and they'll finish out this Friday, as well as the junior prom, which is well anticipated. And we are coming up about halfway through our fourth quarter, as well as, oh, we have a band concert on Thursday, and it's open invitation, everyone is welcome. And as usual with our music department, we'd love to see everyone's support, as well as student productions tickets are on sale officially, and that will be Memorial Day weekend on that Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM.
This week is also our last week of school for our seniors, so our last day of school is on Friday, and so is our senior breakfast, and our internships start the following Monday. And also, the spring art show is coming up for Tuesday, May 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in the cafeteria, and again, it's open to everyone, and the more support, the better. My art and also my other students' art across all the grades will be there as well, so.
Cass, will you send us an invite to that art show? Thank you. Okay, thank you all. Approval of the minutes. May have a motion to approve the following. Minutes of the special meeting held on April 23rd, 2024, minutes of the regular meeting held on April 23rd, 2024, and minutes of the special meeting held on May 7th, 2024. Sarah, seconded by Robin, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you very much. Board Committee reports. Anyone? Sarah.
The Curriculum Committee met last Friday morning, and we had our usual literacy update. Amy talked about the pilot for inter reading that would be within a few classrooms in the fall, and we had an update on the Tri-State Report, Consultants' Report, which was very, very favorable, and that'll be coming to the Board more in a few weeks. So, thank you, Amy.
Thank you. HHR is nothing to report, other than what Alan already said. Okay, with that, I'll move on to presentations and discussions. Discussion and possible acceptance of the contemplative gift for the athletic department, Mr. Manfredonia.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everybody. So you have in front of you tonight a contemplative gift from the Blue Wave Booster Club to the Athletic Department to do some repairs to the elevated scorer's table that's at the Curlyan Stadium. It was damaged in a storm last spring, the roof broke off, as well as some of the seating became loose. So we have, we looked into getting a new one, it was in excess of $20,000, a little bit too costly for the Booster Club to completely replace. The company that we work with is about 10 years old now, so they're no longer in existence, so we got a quote from a certified and licensed welder to do the repairs, and so we have in front of you is a contemplative gift for those repairs to take place.
Any questions? Okay. With our profound thanks to the Blue Wave Booster Club, I will entertain a motion to approve. That is John, seconded by Greg. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Chris. Update on the advertising pilot, Dr. Adley, Rich, and Chris again.
So in the fall, the Board requested that we collaborate with the Blue Wave Booster Club and sort of try to implement a pilot policy around advertising to see how it would go, and it has went extremely well. I want to thank Doug from the Blue Wave Booster Club for the collaboration. They basically took it and ran with it. We do have a memorandum of understanding of how to proceed. You can see that there are six qualified sponsors that run continuously on the scoreboard during and after sporting events. There is a spring, sort of an ex-edition that you can see before you here, which is, I won't read the bullets here, you can see what the bullets are, just, it's the next phase of it. From my perspective, has worked very well. We anticipate receiving $1,800 from the first installment for the first phase of this. Mr. Manfredonia wants to talk anything about it, he certainly can, and Rich can talk to other financiers, but it does work well. We are looking for the Board to just agree that we could move on to the next phase, but Mr. Manfredonia, do you want to comment on it, please?
No, not to prolong it, but I think it's been a really positive work in conjunction with the Booster Club. It's, from what I heard, positive feedback. You've probably seen the advertising rolling on the video board, it's been at a game, so it's been a positive endorsement from our end.
Rich, can you walk us through the finances? I see $1,800, helpful to understand the background.
So there's a profit sharing, 60-40 with Booster Club. So based on the timing, they've collected, I believe, $750 for each, we would get 40% of that, and so the agreement calls for payments and installments. So obviously, if it were to expand to the A-Frame banners and the banners on the stadium, that number would grow.
When we say 750, is that per game, is that per season?
I think it's per season.
All right, Board questions. Katie.
Thank you. So I saw expanding the pilot program as having four different bullet points of banners. Is that, that there's potential for all of those at once to be displayed?
Banners on the...
So like 12 A-Frame banners, 12 banners at the top of the bleachers, 12 banners on the sidelines, 30 banners on the fence?
I think there's room along the fence lines, as well as the sidelines and on the top of both sides of the bleachers to fit nearly all those banners, yeah.
So my question, I guess then, is six sort of like scrolling on a scoreboard only and being one at a time along with other things is a marked difference from permanent banners that are displayed, you know, in, you know, over 60 of them? So how do we think that that will change the feel of the competition environment?
I think that remains to be seen, to be honest with you. When you look at it here, it sounds, as you are describing, that seems like a lot. I think once you see it up and see how that looks, we would have a better determination actually, is it well received or is it not well received, or just too much? I honestly don't know.
Yeah, does it make sense to scale it? I mean, like 60 banners for $1,800 seems like a lot of space for...
So the $1,800 is just for the scoreboard, obviously would depend on if they were able to do all of these. I would think if they were able to do all of these, you're probably looking at $25,000, but that depends, obviously, if they could fulfill all of them.
Okay, so that's a lot different information than what's in this memo.
Robin.
So just to clarify, if we did what is proposed here, what are you projecting would be the potential revenue that the school would see?
So I would think the maximum would be about $25,000, assuming that they were able to get sponsors for 12 A-Frame banners, and then 12 banners along the sides, and then obviously so on and so forth. If they weren't able to fulfill all, then obviously it would be less.
Sam.
Is there a possibility that, would that be part of the 24-25 budget potentially then, if we approved this?
I would think if you approved this, then we could add that to the...
And would that potentially factor in then to our discussions of cuts, because it could add additional revenue?
Yep, correct.
So up to potentially $25,000. Thank you.
Is that, sorry, just a panel, is that total or is that the full?
That's our, that's our share.
Sam.
Can you remind us what the qualified sponsors, why they're only six, and if, you know, if Greg had a business and wanted to be a sponsor, what does that, what does qualified mean?
So we have the right to reject somebody, so if somebody, you know, was something that we didn't want affiliated with the schools, maybe like an alcohol company or something like that, we can say no.
Is that delineated anywhere?
Yeah, it's in the annula.
Okay, but is it on our website if people were looking to sponsor, or they have to reach out to you and then...
So they have to reach out to the Booster Club, and the Booster Club organizes all the sponsors, and then they let us know, okay, well, we have Palmer's Market, or we have Rings End, and at that point, Dr. Adley could say yea or nay, so obviously, if somebody came along and we didn't want that, then they would fall for it.
Do you know if there's been anyone that we've turned away?
Nope.
Julie.
Thank you. I'll just say thanks again to the Booster Club for taking this and running with it. And maybe as we move forward on this and it grows, let's just look at ways to build in, trying to assess what the experience of it is. I know it's, we're saying right now that so far, the feedback's been positive. I'm assuming that's just kind of casually gathered, but maybe there's an opportunity to formalize how we're understanding, you know, is it becoming cluttered? Is it becoming distracting? Is it taking away from the Blue Wave-ness? Just suggestions, I'm not saying that it will, but it might be something to think about as we move along.
So Alan, are you looking for, what are you looking for from us this evening?
Madam Chair, I think Brenna is...
Oh, sorry.
Do you have your hand up, Brenna?
Yeah.
Brenna, please.
So just sort of to respond to that, I think that though we like to envision our school as sort of a safe haven away from, you know, all the advertisements and all the, you know, hustle and bustle that sort of comes at us, I, I used to swim in an environment where there was like giant advertisements everywhere you're, I could see, and I don't believe that it was as much as a distraction. I just sort of become acclimated to it with time, as you would become acclimated with, you know, the trees and the scoreboard saying, like, Wave Pride, things like that.
Thank you, Brenna. Okay. Okay, so what do you need from us, Alan?
I just need that we pass an understanding that we proceed to the next phase of this.
But if you receive that, then also you're going to build it into our budget adjustments.
Correct.
Okay. I think you probably need a motion. Yes, John?
The full 25, or we do just down one?
How do we know?
We don't have a vote.
I think we would do the full 25. If you ended up being a little bit of short, you know, hopefully a few thousand dollars here or there doesn't, you know, cripple the budget next year.
Okay, I think we'll take a motion, because there's an implication. Robin will move, and a second, John seconds, all those in favor.
What was the motion?
Oh, good question. A motion to approve expanding the pilot for the fall season, correct? As outlined in the memo.
Jill, just a question.
Yes.
Is there any discussion around like how we're charging for it, in terms of like how we get to the 25, or do we not determine that?
It's my understanding, Alan, you should answer, or Rich, but it's my understanding that Blue Wave, go ahead, Rich.
Booster Club sets the price.
I think maybe after the pilot, it's worth reviewing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Or after the Phase Two of the pilot. Okay, so I was, all those in favor? Robin, Sarah, Jill, John, Julie, Greg, all those opposed. Dave, all those abstaining. Katie. Okay, motion passes. So you have our motion. Thank you. Presenting, what's up?
Do you have a quick comment?
Sure.
My issue here is not so much that I don't want to support the athlete, my issue here is I think there may be better ways this Board could look at doing it, if you're looking at year-end sweep, and so the way we do some funding, so I'd love to explore some of those opportunities over time.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the comment. Presentation on possible approval of international trips for the 24-25 school year, Dr. Fedigan, Mr. Janosko, and Ms. Moricio.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to go first. All of this information is in your packet, and so in the interest of time, and also in case anyone has any questions, I'm going to speed through the first couple of slides because you've seen them before, they're the exact same. This is the fourth time the Board has seen the same slide, so the agenda, program development, how we got here, what students gained from international, ooh, that's too fast, what students gained from international travel. I'm only pressing once, why is it going to? It's okay, okay. And there's also information there about the company that we're using, Education First, we've used them for all of our trips, and we're not changing using them. So for April break 2025, I am proposing a 10-day Spanish-language immersion trip to Costa Rica. The trip starts in the capital city of San Jose. We then move to spend two days in Arenal in the volcanic region of the country. Hopefully, there are no volcanoes erupting when we go. In days four to five, we're in Monte Verde, it's their rainforest. And day six through seven, the Pacific coast and Manuel Antonio, it's a, the Pacific coast has a lot of animal reserve areas. Day eight is in Sarchi, it's an excursion to an area that's known for its traditional artisanal markets and just artist colonies. And then on day nine, it's a trip through the Sarapiqui River, and then we'd be coming home on the 10th day. And just to say, a plug for these trips, they, you have all been super supportive of them for the past four years, they've been absolutely incredible. We just got back from Argentina last month, and it was amazing, our students spoke Spanish the entire time with our guides ordering lunch, and that's really what we want to do. And the same thing with France, we had two trips over April break, and so did Francis, and they've just been absolutely incredible, and we're hoping to be able to continue that next school year. And the next slide is about accommodations and meals, nothing is changing, centrally located in safe areas, high standards for safety, regularly inspected by EF staff on location. Just a reminder for everyone, this is also in the information that I supplied, but we have a person, a local guide that is approved by the Costa Rican government, who will meet us at the airport, who will stay with us the entire time, they're with us in our hotels, on the bus, and they say goodbye to us when we get on the plane home. And then also meals on tour, an immersive cultural experience, students enjoy trying new foods, this is always the, where students are most apprehensive, but end up having the best time trying new things. And then, oh, can, Cass, can you try and doing it for me? Because the last, that one, thank you. So this is the price, the trip to Costa Rica this year is $3,849. What's included and what's not, the same things that are included and the same things that are not included as the past three trips, round-trip airfare, all hotels, our tour director, the traveler support team, all programming, breakfast and dinner, project-based learning, a tour donation page where students can send that to their families and have families offset that cost for holidays, birthdays, et cetera, and then a college essay toolkit if students want to use their experience on tour to help them write their essay. And what's not included is our ground travel to the airport, which we arrange for all students to leave the high school and arrive to the airport together, passport, visa, and baggage fees, which because of the nature of these trips are typically included in the cost of the flight, spending money and tips, lunches and snacks, we go over all of this with parents when we meet with them to not only promote the trip, but when we also have our final list of students, they come to the school and meet with us for a presentation on these things, and college credit through EF if someone were to choose to get that, and a global travel protection plan, which is an additional insurance that's on top of the insurance that is already built into the cost of this trip. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions so far? Robin.
Just one question, what are the project-based learning programs, or what you referred to a research project?
Yep, so if a student does opt-in to earning college credit, there is a different, when a student signs up to go on a trip with EF, they have a traveler page, and when they enroll to earn those college credits, another tab on their traveler page opens up that has a toolkit that helps them do the project that they have to do to earn those credits. So that's included, it's not a separate thing. The tuition that you pay for the college credits is not included, but the help to actually do the work that is required is included.
So that's only for students that would be doing that, right? It's not everyone who goes on the trip?
Exactly. It's optional.
Okay, great, thank you. That's it?
Okay.
Thanks.
If I may, just Francis is coming up, Christine is here. These are two administrators who, at a request to try and provide programs for kids over the summer, every year have stepped to the plate in terms of trying to promote some diversity of travel and so on, different experiences. You'll never have an experience or education in your life than travel. I thank both of them for providing the opportunities for the kids, thank you so much.
Dave.
Just two questions. One is on the agenda, I assume the policy's in here tonight? We're not taking any action on the policies, that's just as a reminder.
They're for our reference.
Okay, cool, thank you. And then the other question was Costa Rica in particular, any heightened travel alerts?
Not at the moment, no. It's actually safer to travel to Costa Rica than most places in Europe right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Christina mentioned this, but I just want to highlight that we recently returned from England on April 23rd from a 10-day trip. It's the first time that we have had something connected to English of this magnitude. We had 20 fantastic kids, I want to give a shout-out to those kids. It was a great trip. You'll remember us presenting that last March. I'm here with Ms. Hesberg, who's one of the teachers in the high school English department, who was a chaperone on that trip, who's going to be talking about another opportunity in just a moment. And just to make it clear here, unlike in world language, I don't feel like we are going to be expanding and doing a million different kinds of... I don't feel like we are going to be expanding and doing a million different kinds of trips. Based on the enrollment that we had for our trip to England, we expect that we would look to doing that every other year. And in the in between years, we have this new opportunity that we'd like to present you tonight. Okay? So I'm going to let Ms. Hesberg, who will be the point person for this particular trip, take over and I will offer him some thoughts as we go. Okay?
Hi, good evening. Um, so we are very excited to offer the literature in France trip to your consideration. Uh, as Francis mentioned, we had an amazing experience in England. And the students learned so much. And so as we were creating this trip, we wanted to offer them a similarly excellent experience. So many, we're also using EF. So all almost all of the policies are pretty much exactly the same as what Christina presented. Obviously, the itinerary is different. And I don't really want to make you suffer through me butchering the names of these things. I'll learn while I'm over there. But one of the things that I do want to point out is that we are going to be staying primarily in Paris, except for one, like two days when we are moving over to Brussels. That's kind of like a a bonus almost. So this is going to be a sort of cross curricular trip, whereas literature in England mostly focused on English. We are really excited that this trip actually appeals to several different types of students. So ultimately, we chose France because there was a big expat movement you might be aware of in the 20s especially. So this is going to be something that definitely appeals to our American Studies juniors as they get to sort of step into the shoes of the modernist authors. But also, this is a experience that students of history, especially the world studies, as we look at World War I. And the students of art can also certainly enjoy based on our itinerary. So our destinations, again, primarily we're going to be in Paris. But some of the things that I do want to point out are the immersive learning experiences that we're going to have along the way. We have a scheduled painting class that we can do that'll be led by a local art museum expert. We're going to have the opportunity to have students journal at the same cafe where Fitzgerald wrote part of Gatsby. We are going to have a Parisian cooking class that they can do. So, um, you know, if you want your students to come home and cook you a nice French meal, that that is something that we can offer. Um, and then again, we are going to be moving over to Brussels for a little bit of time to explore a historic site for World War I. And then we will start in Paris. We'll enter into Charles de Gaulle and then we will depart home from Brussels. We'll take the train over and the train cost will be included. Let me see. Um, again, as far as curricular corrections, this is a cross curricular trip. It is going to focus as far as the literature connection on the modernist writers and the expats in Paris. We're going to have moments with Hemingway as far as a walking tour. We'll visit Gertrude Stein's cemetery site. We'll attend a jazz performance, which can factor into our studies with the Harlem Renaissance and the connection to the World War. But also, again, we're going to have immersive experiences in terms of arts and history, where the students will be able to sort of gain a very broad understanding of how France can kind of connect to their studies. Yes, okay. So, um, again, similar thing to Christina. Included will be your airfare and your on trip transportation, hotels, private bathrooms, our full time tour director, who will be with us from the moment that she collects us from the airport to the moment that, uh, well, he or she leaves us again. And then 24 hours travel support, daily activities, tours, entrances. Not included will be, again, our coach bus from DHS to make sure that everybody arrives in the exact same place. We can keep an eye on our students, baggage fees, passport, visa, lunch, snacks. You kind of have already heard this. So in the interest of time, I didn't necessarily want to take up that much more. But, um, yes, it'll be nine days and over April break. And then the cost will be between 4,800 to 5,000. And students will have the opportunity to, um, similarly offset that cost in terms of having like a donation page. And the more students that we get, the lower the cost goes in terms of it. So there is flexibility in terms of that of that number.
Thank you. Okay, board questions. Sarah?
Thank you both for bringing this. I think the the cross curricular aspect of it is exciting. Is there a financial aid for anybody or no for these trips?
Yes, so there are opportunities for students to apply, I believe, for scholarships with EF. And then also, um, we sort of gather like airline miles as well within our capacity as tour leaders, but we donate those back to students who might have a need for that cost to be offset as well. So there are definitely opportunities to help people in terms of financial aid. And like we said, the more interest we raise, the lower the cost goes. So that's kind of something that we're looking forward to in terms of promoting this. And also why it's nice that it's cross curricular because we'll attract a much larger group of students.
And is that something when you present this to the students and to the parents that that's?
Yes, definitely. Yep, it's emphasized.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. With that, um, with our thanks to all three of you for these exciting trips and for your efficient presentations. May I first have a motion to approve the proposed international trip to Costa Rica in April 2025? Julie, seconded by Katie, all those in favor? That is unanimous. We have a motion to approve the proposed international trip literature in France in April 2025. Julie, seconded by Katie, all those in favor? That is also unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible action on 612 English Language Arts, Dr. Fedigan and Mr. Janosko.
Well, hello again. So in April, I provided the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee with a 612 English update. There are highlights of that update linked in tonight's memo. Tonight, I'm going to focus on one aspect of that particular update, and that is our request for Board of Ed approval for redesignating two of our English courses with English 8 Advanced becoming English 8 and with English 9 Accelerated becoming English 9 Honors. This request represents not only the recommendation of the English teachers of both schools, along with the school principals, but also the recommendation of the district's leadership. The team has come together on several occasions this year to discuss the opportunities at length. All of us believe that these redesignations will lead to a lot of benefits for the students in grade nine, uh, grade eight and grade nine. So in an effort to keep this short, I will just, um, throughout this, I will I will just make a plea that if you go and look at the video for the presentation on April 9th, it's a much more comprehensive look at the situation. So I hope that you'll do that as well. So that presentation began with two timelines. And those timelines trace the evolution of the two courses that we're talking about now. One was obviously for English 8 Advanced and English 9 Accelerated. And the point of this was to talk about the different kinds of circumstances that were in place when these courses came about. Case in point, 27 years ago, when we first initiated English 9 Accelerated, we were at the old high school and our enrollment at the time was fewer than 800 students. It was a very different learning environment and it was, had different needs at that time. You can see that the courses have evolved over time. They have changed and they are significantly different from where they started. It's worth pointing out before I move on from this slide that for English 8 Advanced, this marks the only advanced English class in a middle school in Durg A. And for English 9 Accelerated, DHS is one of two schools that do not have an English 9 Honors class in Durg A. Okay, so we're kind of outliers in both of these courses. I also talked about how we place students into these courses. Now, this slide only features English 8 Advanced, but we virtually use the exact same criteria for both courses. We have a reading assessment, the DRB, or the Degrees of Reading Power Assessment. We have a writing assessment, the Benchmark Writing Assessment, and we use a half year grade. Students need qualifying scores in two out of the three criteria for placement in the advanced course for both grade levels. So I want to look a little bit more carefully at English 8 Advanced and take a deeper dive and see how we're doing with those those qualifying scores and our placements. And if you look at our, the number of students with qualifying reading scores over the last three years, we've seen sort of a lower plateau in terms of those students who qualify through reading, writing. The last couple of years, the scores are a little bit of a lower plateau there. And so we're seeing that our numbers in terms of students who qualify for the course are down a little bit over the last couple of years. But you should note that in the right hand column, you'll note that the students who wave into the course, and this historically has been a way for students to access the course. Those numbers are very consistent. In fact, the number for the cohort for next year is actually significantly higher than the number of students who qualify for the course. So one of the points I want to raise with this is if your conception of this course is that it's a collection of the elite of the elite in terms of ELA at the middle school, it's not really the case and it's not ever really ever been that way. Typically, a section has a large cohort of students who do not have scores that qualify them for placement in the course. And sometimes they're significantly lower. I still, I mean philosophically, I think it's great that we provide access through the waiver. I'm not denying that. I just want you to think about like having an advanced class at the middle school and the need for it. The other thing I want to point out is that we have as our primary instructional model at the middle school, the workshop model, which permits a lot of independent work time within the class so that teachers can work in small groups and individual students and differentiate instruction so that some of our top students, when they're working independently, we can challenge them and give them additional projects. And we can also help our struggling students at the same time within the class. We believe that that obviates the need to sort students into different grade levels. Moving along to English 9 Accelerated, we see much higher numbers of students who qualify for the course, which is great. And we typically see higher scores in eighth grade for students taking our assessments. But the challenge lies in the number of students who remain enrolled in the class. So once students are initially placed in that course, we we start losing students before they even leave the middle school. We lose students over the summer. And what's most troubling is we have a large contingent of students who will withdraw from the course once the year starts in September of their freshman year. So it's the very first month of their first year in high school. It's disruptive to their schedule. It typically messes it all up and we have, they have different teachers that they contend with in the very first month of the year. It's also disruptive in causing imbalances in our class sizes in both English 9 and English 9 Accelerated so that we have much lower numbers in our accelerated courses. And we tend to really push the limits of the students in our English 9 courses. Now, one thing I want to highlight is the students who do withdraw from the course in the first month of the year in ninth grade, they have to have a form that's filled out and signed by me. So that gives me an opportunity to conduct what amounts to an exit interview with those students. And I will tell you that to a student, the number one response is not even close. I mean, 90% of the students that I meet with tell me they would stay in the course if it only had the GPA boost that we associate with honors and AP. And I'll just say that to me, it doesn't really seem logical. To you, it probably doesn't seem logical, that need for the extrinsic reward. But it's real. It happens all the time and it is a problem for that course. Maybe our students can speak to that at some point this evening. I want to also point out something that we do a lot of thinking about in English. And that is, we have two AP courses in 12th grade that we see as the culmination of two pathways that we have in English. We have AP Lit, which is a course that is filled with imaginative literature, poetry, drama, fiction, and it really privileges the interpretive act. We also have AP Lang, which is focused on nonfiction, rhetoric and persuasive techniques that authors use. So it's a very different course, a very high level. Obviously, they're APs. The AP Lang test was held just today and AP Lit was last week. And we see these as two pathways in high school that we see an opportunity in eighth grade to work a little bit because we have both fiction units and nonfiction units. We see that as a great opportunity to really lay the groundwork for these pathways so that students begin to understand what their strengths are and to mention that we, you know, you can maybe set your sights on taking in 12th grade this particular course. So we, for that reason, especially if we can change the designation of the course, we see that as a real opportunity for a lot more kids to be interested in these pathways at the high school. I'm not saying that we should have all of our kids take APs in English, but I think that we might have a stronger pathway with a stronger sense of purpose and the students who are making choices not on grade weights but on a sense of what their strengths are as students. Finally, I want to just point out that I, when I presented to the curriculum committee, we talked about a timeline to make this all happen. If we get approval, this is the sort of thing that even though this is designated for the 202526 school year, we can start the process this June. We are going to need to bring together the students, I'm sorry, the teachers of grade eight and grade nine so that working together, they can develop the goals for all three of the courses, including identifying key standards and learning outcomes for those three courses. I also think we need to take a look at the placement criteria that we use for the courses as well. So we would be working on that this June. I think it really requires a collaborative effort to make that transition from the middle school to the high school. And then you can see that the steps that we plan on taking culminate in February, which is when we would do course registration for the course that would be for the following year. There's one last thing that I want to highlight, and that is something that I included on the memo, but it wasn't a part of the original presentation. But the curriculum committee asked me if I would provide some representative example units. So to see what that would look like. So if you were to look at the memo that is included in the materials and you look at the very last page of that memo, you'll see that I have an example from English 8 with one of our popular book club units, our dystopian literature book club unit. And you can see the readings and the different assessments that we give at the end of that unit. And you can see that there's a real opportunity to bring a couple texts that I've already had conversations with teachers about maybe bringing down to the middle school. And those are Animal Farm by George Orwell, Lord of the Lies by William Golding, which are examples of dystopian literature. It would give in that book club unit a chance for students who really want to challenge themselves and read things typically associated at the high school, still staying within that genre and being able to participate in the unit and and really read something that's challenging. We also have some challenge projects that we would allow these students to take on. And students who elected to do these more challenging projects at the end of the unit, this would, in our minds, also be something that we would use for placement criteria in the honors course for ninth grade. So I want you to, I want to make sure that you can see that we would not only open this up for all students, but that we would really target our students who, you know, who require that challenge in grade eight. I'll just really quickly say in grade nine, to change that course designation to honors, we are looking to, I have an example of a whole class novel unit featuring Great Expectations by Charles Dickens. We would look to bring in more literary criticism into our units. We have some AP reading passages that actually feature Great Expectations that we could have the students do. And one thing that we really should be doing in the ninth grade is we have these AP, this new AP Lit writing rubric that I think would help our students if we begin to use that in grade, in grade nine. So in those ways, I think we can challenge our students further in grade nine to make that a true honors course. So that is a very quick rundown. I've left out, I think, some of our other rationale for making this change, but those are the basics. I welcome your questions.
Thank you very much, Francis. I will open it to board questions. But before I do that, the other thing that that you all did last spring also was look across departments as well and didn't, isn't one of the other drivers? And didn't, isn't one of the other drivers that you noted that English is different in how it treats the accelerated classes versus the others? Like, science has an honors, and it seemed to me that was another primary reason.
Yes, I mean, one thing I should say is that, you know, I'm trying to limit the scope of this to just English, but this would affect other ninth grade classes. It would in fact affect three other classes. Currently, science, world language, and math have opportunities for students to jump into an honors class. English does not with the accelerated designation. As you, I'm sure, are aware, Western Civ is heterogeneously mixed. It doesn't have any levels. So these courses are all going to be affected, and the curriculum committee will see presentations made on all of those individual courses very soon.
Thank you. Board questions. Julie?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and all the work. I know this has been a conversation for a long time.
Yes.
And this redesignation is something that I have been in support of all that time for a variety of reasons. I thought the discussion about helping eighth graders plan and choose their path, the way you tied it into sort of changing the conversation a little bit and being a little less about following achievement and more about following interest. I just thought, just wanted to note that that's a very interesting way of looking at it. And as we talk about different ways to look at success and to help students achieve in their own ways, I thought that was a really nice way to come at it. I had two quick questions. One is, I'm just curious if you know how many students who take AP Lit or Lang end up taking both?
So this year, we had about, so we have two versions of AP Lang, right? So we have a junior year AP Lang.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
So essentially, the honors track has AP Lang available in 11th grade. This year, we had approximately 110 students who took that, and they sat for the test today. We also have the grade 12 class, which has a different curriculum. They can't take both because it can't appear twice on a transcript, right? That course is really designated for kids who maybe haven't taken an honors class in English the entire time. And this year, I think we had, it wasn't a huge class. I think we had 30 kids take that this year.
Okay. I didn't realize that. Thank you. That's helpful.
Yep.
Do you mind if I just ask one of you?
I don't mind. I'll just remind the board, we have a few things left. So if there's anything that's going to change your mind, fire away.
This is a yes or no.
Okay.
I just want to confirm that this new sequencing or redesignation does not limit any on or off ramps to students that exist presently for those who want to take on or let go of rigor on a different schedule than eighth to ninth grade transition.
Yes. One interesting thing about the eighth grade course is it's had a waiver in place for, it's almost its entire history, but it's a unicorn in English. And as you know, three years ago, we brought the waiver to the high school for all courses. So right now, if we made this change, you know, a student has access to all the advanced courses at the high school at every grade level through the waiver.
I can just add one thing. I think it would actually do the opposite. I would, I would think it would create the opportunity for more rigor, especially when you think about the curricular highlights that Mr. Janosko shared. And we actually have our first professional learning session for curriculum writing for the summer to take place tomorrow.
Greg?
So I'm supportive of the ninth grade redesignation. I know during the curriculum committee meeting, we discussed the eighth grade shift from having an advanced course to not having an advanced course, and putting all the eighth graders into just one course and some of the rationale for that. Some of that stemmed from, I think it would just be helpful for the board to the extent that you haven't been able to see the curriculum committee, subcommittee presentation to just talk through some of the rationale around, I think you said, parents' involvement in terms of trying to push their kids into the advanced course in eighth grade or ninth grade. And some of that was part of the conversation that we had. If you could just touch on that a little bit, I think could be helpful.
Well, you know, I mean, I think I kind of highlighted some things already in terms of our, I think that, you know, what we do in eighth grade presently, and if you look at the evolution of the course, I'll just say that the curriculum for both classes, there's not a lot to distinguish them. So if you're taking the advanced course, you're taking something very, you're reading almost the exact same things that you're doing in the other course. And you have the same teachers. So there's, it's not like we have at the high school where you have a subset of teachers who teach the accelerated course versus the ninth grade course, which exists. It's the same teachers, it's the same readings, it's the same everything. And so it feels like right now, we're sorting for the sense of sorting just to create what we feel is an artificial advanced class. When I just told you that, when you think about the placement numbers, we have more kids who wave into the class, that are a sizable number that wave in, than the kids who actually, you know, qualify for the course. And it's not like we've changed the qualifications of the course over the years. It's the same, we have the same cut scores that we've had for a number of years. So at this point, we think that we would better serve all of our students. And if we included these challenge projects and the different readings that the kids can take within the class, I think we'll actually challenge our top students even more than we're doing right now.
That, Jill, that was part of this conversation we did have at the curriculum, in the curriculum committee, excuse me, is, was supportive of this at the end of our meeting. You know, and I think that the question was that we thought we would get from parents was, well, is my child, who I think is advanced and may very well be advanced in English Language Arts, will they be challenged enough? And I think Mr. Janosko has proven that, yes, the differentiation that is available within this English class in particular, being that there are book clubs and there are very different challenge projects to do, yes, your child, if they are, you know, talented in English Language Arts, will be, will be challenged enough. And the rigor will still be there, even though it doesn't have the accelerated title.
Especially given the adjustments that we'll make within the curriculum.
Right.
And, you know, just to put a finer point on it, the, you know, students who elect to do the challenge projects, and that will come from a combination of teachers prodding kids who can do these challenge projects, which will be significantly more challenging, you know, the fact that that will lead to placement in honors nine. I just think that, you know, I know we have a course in name called Advanced, but if we get past the name and think about what's really happening, I think that this is going to truly challenge the kids who are truly advanced in a different kind of way, but also being a great environment for all kids.
Okay.
I'd just be curious to get Swaha and Brenna's opinions of this because I see you're kind of bubbling a little bit over there.
My opinions are mostly on like the English Nine honors, accelerated honors. I know I took accelerated my ninth grade when I first ran the high school, but I was, like, different parents tried to persuade me not to take it because I know the GPA boost seems like it's like a gift to students, but it's more of like a buffer for trying out a course that you don't know if you're going to succeed in or not, especially if you're coming into the high school for the first time. If English isn't your strong suit taking, and essentially what is an honors course, but having the ability to like have your grade knocked down to three instead of a 3.5 is a big deal. And I know there are students who didn't do well in that course, whose B plus or B their freshman semester still brought down their entire high school transcript. So that's.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And also just that it truly was an authentic, for me, because I also took actually both accelerated eighth grade and ninth grade. It truly was a challenging course. I remember I read an entire book over winter break as an assignment, and we had a test the day that we came back. And I remember reading like hundreds of pages of Great Expectations and these great installments, and then having these really intense discussions. And you would see people like falling asleep in the corners. It was really an intense class, and I truly gained so much from it. And I think for a lot of students, an initiative not to take it, like Swaha was saying, is solely off of that grade where, you know, we live in an environment where, you know, high grades are encouraged and it's less about the, it's less about the caliber of the work. But as for eighth grade, I didn't feel it was as challenging of a course. And I was in touch with my friends who weren't taking the accelerated in eighth. And we were doing virtually the same assignments. And there was very little like work to do, and it was mostly just discussion-based and stuff that you would see more at the seventh grade or sixth grade, regular level even. So I do agree with the changes, I would say.
Thank you. Thank you both for the feedback. That's helpful.
And can I just say that sleeping in class was not because of lack of engagement. It was that those kids were staying up late reading and sure, and that's the reason.
Robin?
One question, as you move this to a true kind of English Nine honors class, a question I have is, because you're talking about changing the curriculum, then also for English Nine. And for the students who then are taking English Nine and not English Nine honors, I guess my question is, does that put them at a disadvantage going forward if they do want to at some point take an AP class? Is their curriculum in ninth grade and 10th grade going to be so different? That, I'm just wondering about the onramps for, you know, potentially moving up in the future, even if English isn't necessarily what they're the best at in ninth grade, but they have an interest.
Well, one thing that I was getting at, that I mentioned, is that we would like to bring in more nonfiction at the 300 level to try to pave the way for those students to eventually take AP Lang. So that's one of the things we're looking to do. It is true, and one of the things that I tell the kids who withdraw currently from accelerated when I meet with them is, hey, I know you don't get the grade weight, but this course is designed to prepare you for honors 10. So if you will, I mean, typically, the kids who take the course do better in honors. So part of what we're trying to achieve here are the kids who should be taking this course to stay in the honors, I hate to call that a track, but they'll be better prepared. So the answer is, they'll be, they'll have access at every grade level. So much of what we do in English is recursive, meaning that we come back to the same concepts and some of the same skills, but increase the level of complexity. So it's not like it's new content necessarily. If they were to join an advanced class and challenge themselves, they just, they're going to have to work harder to really, and really devote the time and energy to the course. So it's going to depend upon the student.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. With that, may I have a motion to approve the six through 12 English Language Arts grades eight and nine course leveling? That is Julie, seconded by Katie. All those in favor? Okay, that is Robin, Sarah, Jill, John, Katie, Dave, Julie, opposed, abstaining. That's Greg. Okay, thank you.
I support the second part, just not the first.
You support the moving to honors, just not the eighth grade.
Thank you, Francis.
Okay, Alicia, five to seven minutes. Overview of bullying legislation and restorative practices, Dr. Dan.
So thank you. This will be a brief overview of most recent legislation regarding bullying and the inclusion of restorative practices. I recognize you have a full agenda, so I will move through this quickly. Just really quick, bullying legislation was initially enacted 21 years ago, and since then, there's been revisions every two to five years. One of the more significant ones was that 2011, they added cyberbullying. The changes that I'm going to start to talk about are actually some of the most extensive changes that have occurred since the law was enacted in 2002. And I know Marge stepped out, but I have to give her thanks for reaching out to Shipman. And Shipman basically said the changes are so technical and complex that they're still reviewing it, and they won't have their complete review until later this summer. So by the 25-26 year, it will have to be incorporated into board policy. So we're still waiting to hear more from Shipman. Good one. This is just under the current legislation that bullying can be through written, oral, electronic communication. It's based on either perceived or actual characteristics of an individual or group, and it can be both direct, indirect, severe, persistent, or pervasive that can cause physical or perceived emotional harm as well. In 2021, they removed the requirement that the acts must be repetitive. Just basic overview of bullying as of 2020 through the CDC. The highest rates of bullying tend to occur in middle school and then high school and elementary. The same is true here when we look at our Thriving Youth survey results. Middle school was 14 to 17% of individuals reported bullying. Only about 1 in 10 individuals actually report bullying. The highest was in our LGBTQ community, which was about 34%. And as of 2023, cyberbullying is right up there with in-person bullying about to take over for that. And the most common types that we see are verbal harassment, social harassment, physical bullying, and like I said, cyberbullying. Just in general, in terms of our data, in the past, in 2023, 2024, we had 10 reported incidents of bullying and three of whom were verified. These are just some common types of bullying, whether it's sexual harassment, hazing, bullying based on specific characteristics. It's not uncommon for bullying investigations to overlap with other policies, such as sexual harassment, teen dating violence also might cross over with Title IX investigations or even 504 and ADA when we look at protected characteristics such as disability. So when must we investigate bullying? Whenever it occurs on school grounds or at a school-sponsored event. Also includes the bus, the bus stop. If there's an electronic device that is owned or leased through the board, then we must also look at that. It can also be investigated if it's outside of the school setting, but it has a characteristic such as creating a hostile environment within the school, infringes on some rights, or it substantially disrupts the educational process. So who must report bullying? Basically, anybody who works in the school, whether that's teacher, psychologist, social worker administrator, paraprofessional, or anyone who has regular contact with their students, must report bullying. Students can submit a bullying complaint in writing, or they can also do it anonymously. Parents can also submit a bullying investigation request. That must be done in writing. And I'm not going to go through exactly the policy. It's available on the website. You guys know it. It defines specifically what bullying is in the related terms and outlines the specific roles of school, safe school climate specialist and coordinator. The new legislation is going to change it so it's just school climate specialist and school climate coordinator. It's going to remove the safe. And talks about the specific steps needed for reporting allegations. In general, whenever an employee observes or is, becomes aware of a potential bullying act, they must orally report the school climate specialist, which is generally the principal or their designate, within one day of receipt, and then a written report within two school days. The main concern is making sure that everyone is safe. So that might include considering some interim safety measures, like creating distance or space between the two individuals. If there was a device involved, maybe restricting use of a computer, things like that. A FERP waiver is sought. It is not required. We want to make sure we protect the confidentiality of students, and parents have the right to do that. If a FERP waiver is not obtained, it just makes it a little bit more difficult to investigate bullying when we can't identify who is involved. Both sets of parents are notified when a bullying investigation is initiated. The investigation can include interviews, sometimes looking at video or artifacts. And then once the investigation concludes, there's 48 hours, and then both sets of parents must be made aware of what the findings were. So what are some of the significant changes that we know are coming? So the last legislative meeting was in 2023, July. And so so far, what we know is that each district must adopt and implement the new school climate policy by the 2025-2026 year. It redefines some previous terms and introduces new terms, which I'll talk about a little bit, and talks about the role of school climate personnel. Specifically, members of each school climate team can be appointed and must be reflective of a diverse group of individuals, and they are appointed through the school climate specialist. There's also some new annual training requirements, some of which go into effect this July. And here is the definition that has been changed. So under the new legislation, it's considered unwanted and aggressive behavior among children in grades kindergarten to 12. It also includes a real or perceived power imbalance. So this is new language that wasn't there previously. Additionally, challenging behavior is a new terminology that is basically any behavior that negatively impacts school climate or interferes with learning, safety for both the student and the school employee, which is new language. There's some challenges with the challenging behavior term because we use that in other contexts for behavior plans, things like that. So there might be some overlap in that. Our school climate improvement plan. So each school must have their own school climate specialist. So each school must have their own school climate specialist who works with their team to create an improvement plan. And required in that is we must take into account the results of our school climate survey, which we actually just wrapped up last Monday. So we'll have that data. That data will then inform the school climate committee of what areas we should be looking at for school climate improvement. They can take into consideration other data as well, but that must be part of it. So the new training requirements go into effect July 1 of this year. It requires that local and regional boards provide resources and training to school employees in the areas of social, emotional learning, school climate, which also includes research-based interventions and restorative practices. So it's not yet clear the intersection of those training requirements. That's one of the things that Shipman said they're working on, so stay tuned for that. But it has to be available to all school employees. So what do we know so far about the restorative practices response policy? So it essentially says that we must address challenging student behavior that is nonviolent or does not constitute a crime through our school climate team and with the support of the school climate specialist. We cannot include SROs or other law enforcement unless it is a violent or criminal act. So what are restorative practices? So we've had some of our staff trained restorative practices. The goal is really to create a community and accountability to one another to create a conducive learning environment. It's loosely based on a family model. If you have a conflict with your sibling, you still have to come to the table and eat dinner. So you better be able to function. You don't have to really like each other in that moment, but you have to be able to function in a constructive way. The same is true for our classrooms. We might have kids who, you know, might have a conflict. And the idea is we are all a community supporting one another. So how do we come together and coexist and be supportive classmates? Again, we frequently hear about how kids have less time to engage face to face. The idea is really creating an opportunity to create community with equal responsibility among each member. Some of the key points when we think about restorative practices, 80% of restorative practices is really about creating community. So when we look at it in relationship to the bullying practice, we're really trying to prevent getting to the point where we need to file bullying investigations because the idea is that by building and forming and transforming climate, we create an environment where we're administering some form of discipline in collaboration with the child. So as you can see, just from this kind of graphic, we really want to create an environment where we're working with kids that is strongly nurturing and supportive, but also really holds limits and is really clear about the expectations for each child and their behavior in the classroom. So where are we with regards to progress towards the new requirements? So we've already administered the school climate surveys. The data analysis from those climate surveys will help inform our school improvement plan in each building. A group of staff members ranging from teachers, counselors, principals, have already participated in restorative practices throughout this year. It's a small group, and we're going to continue to send a group and also have some facilitators come and do district wide work. Many of them came back. Some of the responses were, it's been a wonderful training. This is essentially the glue that keeps everything together that we do in the classroom. And they've really elected to take on more training. So a select group will receive advanced restorative practices training over the summer with the idea that we can build internal capacity to comply with some of these new training requirements. And we also continue with our current SEL. So we have ruler in place, we have advisory and flex lessons, we have DBT, we have kind of collaborative problem solving in place. So all of those will continue on the SEL side of things.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate that. All right, I'll open it to board questions. Robin.
One, one question I have is a lot of this legislation is now probably going to take up additional administrator time, new roles, new reporting requirements. Is there any grant funding available for us to make use of, given the additional costs that would be associated with this?
So I have not seen any yet. And when you look at it, it just says we're required to do it without necessarily. I mean, we talked, this might be more of an unfunded mandate. I think that's why we're trying to build the capacity by having some people go now and then turnkey it with our internal capacity, and they're motivated and excited to do that. So I'm hopeful that maybe there will become some, but as of now, I'm yet to see any.
Okay, and then one, one more question. In terms of the annual school climate survey, one point of feedback that we had received as a board is that if students opt out, does that end up skewing the data that we get that then could end up changing what we would actually recommend in terms of our improvement plans going forward?
I would say the numbers are low enough that it would not. It was dependent on building maybe 5 to 10%. I'll have to double check that, but it was not such a significant amount that it would appear to skew.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah.
Thank you, Alicia. You mentioned that you're sending a few people for advanced training and they're spread across. Is there, are you doing that? Is, are, will there be somebody from each building who is trained?
So that's the goal. The training is over the summer, so it makes it challenging because it's a one week training and it's over the summer. We are at a minimum trying to get teachers and counselors and administrators from across grades and have kind of a district wide team lead. I would love to have at least one person in each building. So right now they're in the process of submitting applications to be part of that training because it is, you know, a full week long training.
Okay, thanks.
Katie.
Thank you. Thank you for going over this, Alicia. I know that there's quite a bit of legal updates here, as well as how we're going to implement them in our schools. So can you confirm? I see that on one of your slides, it said that the districts must adopt and implement a new school climate policy and bullying complaint forms. Is that our, that's referring to our bullying policy? Like that must be updated within the board, correct? Okay, great. So to that point, after having read through our current policy a few times, I think that there are definitely things missing that we should continue to work on, especially in light of some of the things that have been brought to the board's attention this year. So a big part of that is the parental notification. You know, when I read through this, I see that there's, you know, like a 48 hour that they'll be notified. But I think that there are a lot of steps missing. So I would like for us to just look more carefully at, you know, if you're being handed this bullying policy because there's been an incident, is that policy going to be enough to, to make you understand the process and what is going to go forward? Is it going to be enough to provide consistency across administrators? And because I think that's the spirit of the legislation is consistency across all of this. So I think that the investigation methods and timelines, parental notification and consent, you know, how, how many administrators to how many students are parents invited to be part of that are important considerations. And then while I think typically when we look at policies like this, we think about protecting vulnerable students, which, which we absolutely should, as is our responsibility. However, it would, it behooves us to think forward about other ways that this might be mistreated. And how might we be dealing with a false allegation? What kind of repercussions could exist for retaliatory behavior? So that's just another component that I would really urge the board and the administration to look at holistically. Because if we are doing this and it is mandated, I would hope that we do it completely and well.
Greg, and then Dave.
So I would, just looking at this first point on this, the school climate surveys will inform school climate improvement plans for next year. I would just urge significant caution on using any of what you get out of those surveys to make any changes within the school. Now, we opted out as parents to have our kids taken. But my son, who's in fourth grade, is 10 years old, came home. He did share some of the questions that were on those, on the survey, which I have not seen. We did ask Dr. Ralley for them, but we've not seen them. And I'll give an example. I think you would be shocked at the responses from young kids and the opposite of what you might expect. So an example of this is, he said, one of the questions was, are you treated the same in your classes as everybody else? And his response was absolutely not. Well, why isn't he? He has five special needs kids in his class who all have teachers or extra teachers following them around. So he would have put that very low. But the reality is that the people we're trying to protect are the people who he's saying are the difference for him. So maybe the exact opposite of what you might expect from a 10 year old, right? So I would just urge caution as it relates to these surveys and the way that kids respond to them. That type of question for a 10 year old? I'm not sure the person who wrote that question has interacted with a 10 year old very recently.
I appreciate that. And I think one of the things they say is that you must consider that data in addition to other relevant data. So even in selecting that measure, I think, you know, it's one of them. They say that it has to be a well researched instrument. So that's one of the ones that was part of that, the options in which you could choose for, for that. And at the same time, we know that, you know, and they look at it on the backend. If there's inconsistencies in data, then they don't, they kind of clean the data to see if somebody misinterpreted the directions and there's, you know, it's not consistent. So I think that's one piece of it. So you're right, we have other things. Each building is unique. They have their school climate team already. So the feedback from the school climate team, from the parents are all considered when you're considering a school improvement plan. So it's one piece of the data.
In terms of the survey, Greg, they were available before one of the meetings. I can't remember if you were, you may know, yeah. But anyway, you're welcome to make an appointment to come in and see them. Dave.
Thanks. Just a couple of points following up on this. I know you mentioned we're waiting for more stuff from Shipman, and I could understand why. I saw your slide and the updated definition of bullying, and I thought maybe that was just an excerpt. But that's it. That's the entire language. And then I also went and I looked at our policy and looked at the language in there. So obviously, we're going to have to update our policy at some point. Obviously, we're going to need guidance from Shipman. But then, you know, to Greg's point, the way it was written, like just if I read the words here, bullying, and I see among children, so that means an adult couldn't be a bully. Okay. See, it says unwanted behavior among children. So that means if one of the children wants to be a bully, then it's not because it's among children and one of them wanted to take that. So like, it's just drafted really, really poorly. So I can't wait to see what Shipman is going to pull out of this because it doesn't really nail down what they're dealing with, whereas some of the other definitions really did. So this is going to be a challenge. Thing about we're going to have to do this at the policy level. I think given how poorly this is drafted, my concern is going to be also thinking about how this happens in practice at the administrative and the building level. So I'd love to have an opportunity to look at some of that training, to have a look at some of the administrative policies and how this is actually administered in real life. And then I guess the question is, I mean, just at a high level, do you have any sense now of how, you know, someone at the building level would make a determination in adjudicating a perceived power imbalance? Like where do you start with that? What does that mean?
So I think it's all TBD. I'm with you. There is a couple of trainings in June, but I think, you know, as, as we were told, it's very complex and they're trying to, to work through it. My understanding is actually that the, the majority of the bullying kind of procedures as we have them now are not going to be included. So that's why some of the definitions, they're, they're not as robust because they're going to completely change the way in which we address it. So absolutely more to be, to come.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to consider, whether that be the policy subcommittee or whether that be the full board, that this one's going to be a little bit different. So we may have to go down a little bit deeper administrative to understand how this is actually happening in practice because these changes just create so much variability and so much lack of clarity. So it's going to be a little different than we've usually looked at. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on this topic?
It's helpful to have an update, so thank you for coming. I do second the point related to what Katie was saying and to what Dave is saying. I think that while our policy language has to, for obvious reasons, be legislative and legal, it's critical that people understand it. So I hope we can look through both lenses and try to thread that needle as best we can as a district.
Robin. Just on that point, I mean, I'm thinking about the kindergarten or first grade teacher where something happens on the playground and realistically how they would know what to do. Because I mean, in the past, I think they would just talk to the kids, talk to each parent by phone, and then they resolve it. And now I get the sense now they have to do written reports, send it to the committee person. Like there are a whole bunch of different steps, right? And that, that includes every single grade K through 12. Is that correct?
Well, currently they have to, so there's also, there's also conflict that doesn't rise to the level of bullying. So there's still typical disciplinary, and, and a lot of the restorative practice is that. It's having the conversations before it escalates.
Okay.
So that's currently still going on. They're still having conversations before it rises to that level of, of bullying.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Charlie Klein, speed talking on five to seven minutes.
I'm so glad you pointed that out because a colleague of mine also has a wager. So I'm going to try to stick to that also. I didn't say which colleague. Good evening. Who has the clicker? I'll start as the clicker is because that's, my time is starting, so I'll start with that also. Thank you. Just a reminder, which is up there.
Amy, move it quickly for her.
No, no, I've got this. I've got this. So I'm timing it. We can start. And just for an overview and going through that also, just to begin with, the idea of the administrative regulations regarding students under 504. And during my presentation, I'll show the difference between 504 accommodations and the IDA. And I hope you'll leave with that. I have put links in, so I won't go through all the legislation because it is, it is redundant. But it's also really important. So I do urge everyone to take time and read it. Our manual also is posted on our website as well, so you can see that. And I, and I have the link for that as well. But just to understand that in the overview of section 504, the law says that we prohibit discrimination on the basis of disability. And schools are responsible for implementing 504 accommodation and reasonable accommodations for students who are identified by a 504 committee. So we look at barriers to allow students with disabilities and also keep in mind it's about access to all school experiences and opportunities and curriculum alongside non-disabled peers. Also educational opportunities, and those can be after school programs, special events. And that's something that also, so barrier free, and you probably remember, for a child who's visually impaired, you might go into a building and see that the steps have yellow tape on them to make sure they can access as their non-disabled peers going up steps. For students who might have a hearing impairment, you'll know that there might be FM systems or different systems in a classroom to give that accommodation. So we're not instructionally changing students' environments, but we're giving access in a barrier free way for that. For protections and safeguards, all students under 504 and under the IDA have protections. So further explanations, and you'll see this in the manual, but just to be focused on about individuals with disabilities, that because of the disability, they can't be excluded. So the idea also, if there's an after school activity that we are sponsoring, we need to get access to the schools. And it's because we do take federal funding for our schools. So know that the nexus between receiving federal financial assistance and providing 504 accommodations under the ADA requirements is something that we're required to do. I also have given the link there as well. So the two important documents that we have, and just to please be mindful of the first regulations of policy, the 5125 and the R, also 5125, the link is there and it really speaks to what we have in terms of our regulations that have been approved by the Board of Education. Under our own manual, which is our Rehabilitations Act manual, 504, we do need to update some names in that, so I apologize. You'll see Marge's name is there in mind, but there are some other administrators that have changed. So we will be updating the names in that, but that's posted as well. And know that as you go through the table of contents, you'll see part A, which really speaks to the Notice of Nondiscrimination Acts. You'll see part B that really speaks to how we identify and evaluate and provide services for students under 504. And lastly, at the part C, you'll see the grievance procedures for any allegations where we're not providing those for students. And I always like to take the opportunity, but please don't enter this graphic, and I will take an extra minute on this one. So please keep in mind that it's about all students. And when you look at these graphics, you could see that the picture contains a large circle that all students represented. You'll see within that, you'll see students who qualify for section 504 are a part of that. You'll see within that, you'll see students who qualify for section 504 are a part of that circle. And you'll see also that students who receive IDAs, eligible services, are also part of that circle, but to keep in mind that they're all part of a larger circle. The next graphic, as you look at the United States, just the Department of Education. On the left side, you can see what section 504 provides. And the oversight is by the OCR, Office of Civil Rights. And the notion that Office of OCR does maintain and oversee that that no discrimination is happening in an environment, okay? That does not provide grant funding. Unlike the IDA, where the Office of Special Education, OSERS, really has oversight for us. And you could see that there's a grant statute that attaches many of the conditions under the IDA because we do receive federal IDA funds. You've actually seen those funds identified in your budget books over the years. And there are two grants that we receive. And very often, families will say to us, can you tell me the difference between opportunity and accommodations under 504 and under the IDA? And this is perhaps one of the most clear definitions of the difference and distinction. So under 504, you can see a student will have a physical or mental impairment, and I'll speak to what those are governed by, that substantially limits one of the major life activities, and we'll go through some of those activities. Under the IDA, you'll see that the student has a disability that's defined by the 13 categories and meets that criteria, but that adversely affects the student's educational performance and the impact on that performance and the student's need for specially designed instruction. So under the IDA, you're looking at accommodations and modifications, but you're also looking at specially designed instruction. And under section 504, you're looking at accommodations and modifications that respond to major life activities. There are opportunities to receive related services under 504, and I'll show those also as I go through the next slides. So physical or mental impairment substantially limits, and I'll speak to the definition under the law of substantially limits the activities. We're required for eligibility to have a record of such an impairment and also to regard as what the criteria is for that impairment. Under definitions of physical or mental impairment, and I won't go through them, but they're included here as well in our manual. I think the important thing when you look at a physical impairment, it can be any physiological disorder or condition. It goes through here, the references of different and the array of different disorders that are not limited to, but that we have to be responsive to. For mental or psychological disorders, we also showed the array of opportunities and consideration we have for those disorders, which can range from intellectual disabilities to mental weaknesses as well as specific learning differences. Then under 504, you look at the major life activities. This list is very, very broad. And when you look at the broadness of these activities, again, it's defined by federal law, not limited to. But they may, and just to give some understanding of that, you might have special desks or special seating for students who have physical needs. You might have opportunities also for support, and they might require some support in concentrating or thinking, so there may be reasonable accommodations to support students within their classes. Also, you're looking at opportunities of major life activities for physiological responsibility we have also, and that lists some of the considerations we have to have ranging from respiratory to other body systems. Substantial limitation truly is a very broad case. And the government also, with the federal law, says this has to be determined by a case to case basis for each student. And the most essential feature of this regulation for substantial limitation is it exists even with mitigating measures. So for instance, if you're a child with a hearing impairment and you wear hearing aids, you still are entitled to 504 accommodations. If you are a child with a visual impairment, you still are entitled, even though it's been corrected, with the exception of glasses, that doesn't count. But you may need large print, you may need your work accommodated in different presentations on a paper. But the notion is also that to keep in mind that that it substantially limits the ability of a student to perform in a classroom and access their learning consistent with other typical peers. And that's what the criteria is for making those determinations. The teams in each of our buildings, they're, I'm the 504 coordinator for the district, but there's a builder coordinator in the buildings. On the elementary school, it's typically the assistant principals who run the meetings. In your secondary programs, it's usually the school counselors and administrators who may run the meetings. The essential piece is, though, that the people who are invited to the meetings are knowledgeable about what is being considered. So if it's, if it's a student who has anxiety or depressive disorder, you'd want a school psychologist or a social worker or a school counselor there to address that. If it's a student who has a physical disability, a student who might have required nursing services, you'd want to make sure you have a nurse there to speak to that. Very often, some of the documentation may be received from family physicians, and you want to have someone who's knowledgeable about those disabilities to be able to speak to it and understand what accommodations are reasonable. Evaluation may be review of school records. It may include knowledgeable people, the family might have information to share with you. It might be observations that happen at home or community environments. And it may also require testing. So if you're a child who has attention deficit, it doesn't require the next level of going under an IDA evaluation, we're looking at that, but might have a CONOR scale, a rating scale that's given by teachers to see how the student's performing in the class. It might be a parent who has worked with an outside physician, and the attention deficit is being mediated by medication, but says the child is still entitled to that accommodation. So you look at all of the review of records that families have provided, that physicians may have provided in concert with the family, or that we may have acquired by a team at school. Plans are developed with reasonable accommodations and modifications, services appropriate. It may be that a child has, requires physical therapy because they have a physical disability, and it could be long term, it could be short term, but you might have a physical therapist attending that meeting. You might have a teacher of the visually impaired because the child has a visual impairment. You might have a teacher of the hearing impaired there to speak to what are reasonable accommodations that need to be provided to that student under a 504 accommodation plan. And individual healthcare plans, of course, are part of this. Our nursing services are always part of this process. Emily Merritt, our head of nursing services, works with training with all of our nurses and staff in the district to make sure that they're designed to really identify what the threat is, what the rescue medication may be, and what is indicated and at what intervals and how it's monitored. Meeting requirements are that at a minimum, we meet once a year for an annual review, and also every three years, if not before an earlier date, if indicated, to review the accommodation requirements. And lastly, just to look at some of the information we provided on district trends in our 504 accommodations. You'll see the number of students we have in each of our programs, in our ELP, elementary, middle school, and the high school. Those are the current for the 20. I believe these are indicated for 22, 23. I don't know that we've published yet for 23, 24. Also, if you look at what the high frequency four plans are, you'll see in elementary that health, other health impairment and other disabilities, those would include, and there's a notation on the bottom, it can be food allergies, diabetes, fine motor impairments, et cetera. Some of them come under the health, other impairment or other disabilities. So if you look at those two fields, they represent many of the medical needs. When we look at middle school, you'll see as children go on to secondary, the numbers and you can see also in some of the disorders change. You can see that the general anxiety disorder, also an ADHD, change as we go through middle school. Some of the other health impairments and other disabilities decrease as children get older. Sometimes they outgrow their allergies, or sometimes they're mitigated. And students, as they go into secondary, can manage them by themselves and don't require the same amount of accommodations in those fields. And lastly, I encourage you to look at not only our manual, but the regulations, and also reach out to any of the school personnel, for any of the committee members or families that want to learn more about 504 accommodations in regard to what their children may need in all of our schools, ERP through high school. Thank you.
Okay, I'll kick it off. You mentioned a couple of slides ago, evaluations. Since we're looking at pupil evaluations, you know, a little bit later in the meeting and sort of in general, is 504 a part of that number, that increase in the number of evaluations? The depth of the evaluations is at this population as well?
There are a few that come under 504. More, most, the majority of them are under IVPs and the IDA. There may be a few, but it's not substantial.
Thank you, okay. Robin.
Do you, it would be interesting to see the trend, the historical trends of the numbers of 504, because I know you showed 23, 24, but I was just interested, and over the past five years, have we seen significant increases in 504s? Or has that changed based on the grade level at all?
It's posted, I can, I can share that with you. It's posted on the state website in terms of our numbers, so we can go back and get that to the board. I can give it to Dr. Radley and put it in a memorandum for the last five years. I don't want to guess offhand. I could say the numbers have increased because I know, but I don't want to guess where and in which areas.
I think it would be helpful to see that, and if you would mind just noting anything of significance. So for example, we're looking carefully at anxiety and how that's manifesting in our schools. So if you guys don't mind just pulling out any, not a, you know, not a treatise, but any relevant bullet points.
We certainly can do that.
In five year trends, thank you. That was my question. Okay.
Yeah, so one would say they have increased, but again, we'll show you.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know where they're increasing. Yeah, thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, all right, thank you. This was, this was appreciated. Thank you very much. All right. That will move on to further discussion on the fiscal year 25 budget. Myself, Dr. Radley and Rich, I have a couple of things to do this evening. I think first and foremost, Alan has an update that he will present to us. We've received it yesterday in our paper, but he'll talk us through it. The second thing we need to do is we need to agree to the number that we're actually solving for. We need to figure out that ECR number in particular, are we gonna budget for that or are we not? Rich and Alan are recommending that we do so. I think I'll follow them in saying I recommend, but we want to make sure that all board members are solving for the same number. The third thing I'll say about tonight is tonight is truly just to ask questions. I'll go through section by section, it's sort of already in sections, and just take questions in each portion after Dr. Radley goes through his piece and after we talk about ECR. And the focus is making sure that anything board members might want to have answered, we can either get answered tonight or can get fairly quickly after this meeting. Okay. Reminder that we are scheduled for a vote on the 28th. Okay, Alan, that I'll turn it to you.
Okay, good evening again, everybody. Just one piece of recent news that I think, if you don't mind, I will put on the table for the board because I wouldn't want to plop it on the board at the next regular scheduled meeting. But there is a possibility of resignations, stroke retirements that most recently here might just fall our way a little bit to our benefit in the wheelhouse of $200,000 to $300,000. That's not a definite, but it's enough of an indication that I wouldn't want to surprise the board with, oh, why didn't you tell us? We could realize that efficiency, so as soon as, and if that becomes available, we will share that and I would hope that we could offset some of the expenses that we're talking about this evening.
Sure.
When will you be able to make that known? I mean, are we talking by the next board meeting, by the next?
I would be very hopeful within, certainly at least one other than within a day or two or otherwise. And the other one, I can't really tell, but certainly by the next meeting. But Mark, I don't know if you have a better, better read on that, I just really don't want to speculate, to be honest with you. But I'm speculating enough where I feel confident enough that something is going to fall our way a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
So with that being said, the board did ask me to go back and look at it, bring them back in efficiency in a reduction in the administration, and that is what we have done. And it is hard to do in the sense of particularly the scope that that the board was referencing. Tried, and the cabinet tried to do that within the spirit of what the board framed it, and it comes back this evening, a reduction of 158, I will say. I'll say it once and I'll move on. I don't want to do this, I don't think it's right for the district. It's very rarely I talk about. I know when I'm doing something that is, that is not helpful to the district, I feel it. I know it, this is not helpful for the district. It's very rare I'm in the position of, I'm more sort of defending something, but I'm just sharing with you that I don't think this is right for this district to go down this route. I don't think you should have put yourselves in this position ourselves. I don't think I should have put you in this position. This is not good for the district, but you asked me to do it, so I'm doing it. But to this day, I've felt as if we have been able to move some things forward, even whenever we've made some difficult choices. I don't feel good about this, and it's not protecting my administrative team. It's protecting what's right for those kids sitting there and the kids that are in the seats in the school. So I share that, but with that being said, I'll share with the proposal that is before as difficult as it may be. We are eliminating all the department chairs in the sense of their specific positions, as you know of them today. We are eliminating the Director of Elementary Education, the full position, that's a full year position. We're taking away the elementary curriculum stipends and the word language curriculum stipends. Thereafter, we're creating the Director of Language Arts, K through 12, Director of Social Studies, K through 12, a Director of Science, K through 12, a Director of Mathematics, K through 12. We would increase their days from 197, that's already 10 days above the regular schedule to 207 days. We are putting in place a Word Language Teacher, K to 12, for full release time to help coordinate the department. We do that by taking a middle school Spanish teacher, which we can do. We're also taking, eliminating a middle school teacher that is a leave of absence position, and we're creating a K through 12 literacy teacher. It says literacy here, it'll be a curriculum teacher depending on any given year where the need is. It may be mathematics, it may be language arts, it depends what the state does, it depends what the skills are otherwise that a K through 12 Language Arts Director would have in terms of either elementary experience or secondary experience. When we make those changes, that realizes that an efficiency of 158,000. There's some presumptions in there. Some presumptions would be that people would want to take these positions. I will say also too that this maintains the Assistant Principal of the High School, Assistant Principal of the Middle School, and the Special Education reorganization, so to speak administratively. I did say at the onset, in fact, I've said it leading into this whole process, back in, way back in November and so on, that I was going to do something for the middle school, and the middle school needed a focus and attention, and I want to give the middle school the focus attention through the Assistant Principal, through the mental health, through the community grant that looks as if it's coming our way, for team talk, through interventions for students and through special education. I don't want to lose that. And yes, I'm making a valid judgment here. Rather is a different term, but I still would feel that we need to keep that reorganization that we have in place. And if I'm forced to reduce an administrator, I would do it in a different area, and this is the area that I'm proposing.
Alan, if you moved forward with this, what would you take off the table?
So I'm quite, I would be quite happy for, to listen to board suggestions. But my initial suggestion would be to take off most likely something like the additional pay for play or additional increases in food service or otherwise. Somewhere where people are paying, and perhaps they don't need to pay. That's clearly not the full amount because the pay for, the pay for participation that we currently have proposed here is another $100,000, more expensive.
Okay, so we'll come back to that. Are there specific questions on this proposal? Sarah.
I thank you, Alan, for speaking at the beginning about your feelings about this. I share them, I think this. I share them. I think this is a, not a great option. I, I think, I don't, we're, we're not here to share opinions right now. But my question is, is this the best of the worst? And what else, and maybe to Marge or to Amy, what else? I don't want to know what else because I know that that will open a Pandora's box to morale, which I know is low. And we put everybody in this position and I hate that we are in this position. And you can tell I'm getting emotional. I apologize.
Well, you can look at other, I have no problem sharing some things. The, the damage has been done, so we have looked at, and I think you'd want me to look at everything. So whether you did this or what you don't, you've done, we have done some damage through this particular process. But that being said, we looked at our, our administrators teaching courses and, you know, part-time, point two or point four or otherwise. Given, quite frankly, given what they've been making as teachers, I would be bringing back a proposal that would be so disruptive and you would save $4,000. What's the point? Like, that doesn't seem to make sense to rock the boat, have a lesser impact on something and come back with a $4,000 saving. We looked at options such as collapsing Humanities and STEM for leadership. And so somebody would be Language Arts and Science, or Language Arts and Social Studies and somebody would be Math and Science. That was not an area in terms of discipline-based leadership that we thought that, that we, that we needed. I mean, this is concerning from the point of the work that the people in these particular positions who are impacted by it do at the moment, certainly in early, early literacy, play-based learning, scientific reading. I'm not particular, I'm not just setting it up because of that, but I'm, but those are areas that are a big concern for me in terms of covering those sort of focuses that we're facing, particularly at this particular time. I listed some, some pros for the current model and cons for like, the pros for the current model or the cons for the, you know, it's just the accountability. There's, it is always good to go to someone and say, look, listen, whether it's the superintendent or the Director of Elementary Curriculum, say, you're in charge of this. Like, what's happening here, right? Now we have a lot of people involved in coordination and so on and so forth. But it's, yeah, it's the best of the, it's the best of the options that we considered. We did also consider, like, the other disciplines that I haven't mentioned, so.
Can you talk a little bit about moving to 207 days and what that enables or does not?
Well, it just, it just enables a little bit of extra hands-on-the-ground preparation, close of the year preparation for the, for the open of the next year. The Director of Elementary Education is a 12-month position.
Sarah?
I am curious to know that if the board chooses to move this forward, which I will not be a part of, but if that is the will of the board, is, if the current department chairs choose to not take these K to 12 roles, which based on, I don't imagine that some would. Marge and Rich, contractually, what does that mean financially?
So we believe that the contract language, that we would come out in a favorable position because, I mean, I don't know that we want to parse through the contract language now, but if the superintendent transfers the department chairs to the new program director positions, then there would be no financial consequence.
Interesting. Julie?
Thank you.
Kind of in a similar direction. It, it looks to me like we're counting the savings from eliminating the middle school Spanish teacher and the middle school English teacher again here. So what does that mean? How does that impact what we looked at last week?
So they're different. So right now, the middle school has eight Spanish teachers. Six are teaching four and two are teaching five. There is a proposal for one reduction. So then there would be six still teaching five, or four, excuse me, and then one, the other way around, five. By creating a new position and pulling it out of the middle school, you can then make the other teachers teach five. And so that's where the offset is. So you actually gain the ability to have teachers teach five. And so you'll end up, if both reductions go through, with six Spanish teachers at the middle school all teaching five.
So this is eliminating an additional.
So two Spanish.
Teacher and an additional English teacher. Okay, I didn't cover on that. Okay. So can you just repeat that? You would be left with six.
So you would end up with, so if both reductions are taken, you would end up with six Spanish teachers at the middle school and all six would teach five classes.
Okay, and then what about in English?
So in English, there would be a reduction of three English teachers. And so you'd go from 16 to 13 and all English teachers would teach.
And that would be, that would get you all at five.
Can I just add one thing? These are positions for teachers who are going out on leave. So one is retiring, but the other two are going out on leave. So the people would not be losing their job. We just wouldn't be filling those next year.
Got it. Thank you. In the case of both Spanish and English, we have folks going out.
Not Spanish.
So Spanish, you would have to have somebody internal from the secondary level fill that teacher leadership role. And that's how you're able to teach five.
Uh, Dave?
So I have two questions, one for Rich, one for Alan. I think, Rich, yours might be simpler. In terms of the middle school, just following up on Julie's question, where do we stand right now? I think my recollection from the last conversations, I think there's 40 teachers who are teaching five instead of four. Like, where do we go? Where do we wind up? I'm just trying to get my head around those numbers again.
So prior, so the current year, there's 41 teachers in core subjects. So science, social studies, math, teaching four. So every time one teacher leaves through attrition, four pick up a fifth class. So the teachers that we indicated are retiring or resigning from the previous meeting brings you down to about 21. If you were to take the English teacher, then you would go down to 17 in the core subject areas.
Okay, and are there any schedule constraints or subject matter expertise that would preclude us getting to 17 at this point?
No.
Are there any other efficiencies that could get us to a lower number that you foresee coming up or any other tweaks?
So it depends on if you get more retirements or resignations. So if you get more retirements and resignations, then that number would shrink.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So Rich, in terms of how our, I'm just, sorry, in terms of how our turnover is working, can, can, what, what is the way that you could get to a fairly low number? Because a lot of our turnover is happening mid-year.
Sure, so we've never had a year in which you've had all the subject matters turnover. So you might have in one year, like, science, math turnover, and then next year, maybe social studies and English. So when you have somebody leave, let's say mid-year, so if the teacher were to leave in January, for example, you'd probably fill that with a long-term sub. And then when you're ready to staff for following year, that's when you're going to make the change. It would be very difficult if a teacher left, let's say in January, and then to then shift those classes.
Sure, of course.
And it's also just, you know, to start at the end, well, at the end of the summer, start of the year is difficult. If we get a resignation ready at the last minute, the schedule's done, you have to revamp the whole schedule. So sometimes those are difficult scenarios to deal with.
Right. Totally understood. It just, you know, this year we're carrying $800,000 in expenses. Next year we'd be carrying $400,000. And so as long as we can keep class size the same, while we're looking at trying to provide the same services to students, we're, I think, I certainly would be interested in knowing how we can not carry that excess expense where we have capacity. Dave, I interrupted you, and then Julie.
No worries. The other point, Alan, thank you for going back and doing this work. Appreciate the effort. Glad you, you know, heard the board's request here. The question I had in mind, you just mentioned a moment ago that this doesn't feel right. And I guess I'm trying to understand sort of how we came up with this particular proposal. And the reason, I think you highlighted, because you contrasted with the idea of bringing the associate, excuse me, Assistant Principals. I'm looking from the previous, I think that's about a $450,000 number for those two positions. Here it's a savings about 118, 180, excuse me. So the question is, can you tell us, other than that you feel it's not right, what may be key metrics or performance indicators or drivers are that led you to favor this decision versus a decision with the APs?
I'll just say that the, the presentations that we did along the way for the two Assistant Principals for the reorganization of Special Education, the accommodation for Special Education, both at the high school and the middle school, the middle school needs a focus, I said that before, the principal is stepping out of the situation. So that's not, that's not an afterthought. There is identified needs there and we need people, our administrators, both at the high school and at the middle school to be outsourcing all students, not just special education population students. They need to be servicing all students, all families, all teachers. And this is an impact teaching and learning. So that is why I kept in this proposal, the Assistant Principals in place.
Follow-up? So I guess, just thinking through the response you gave, you mentioned the importance of having the Assistant Principals facing the students and being involved with students. So between the two, is it fair to imply that, given the role of the curriculum chairs and given the role of the Assistant Principals, then we're favoring someone who's going to focus and spend more time with the kids, who would be the APs, correct?
I will say, Mr. Brown, is that collectively, the package that is, is put together for the middle school and the high school, yes, I would, I clearly was selected over this with what I presented. Yes, I didn't want to, but, but yes.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I'm reading this correctly, what I'm seeing is that the savings that this proposal turns up is actually less than the savings turned up by eliminating those two teaching positions. And those don't impact, to my understanding, any of the rest of this reorganizing and shuffling of positions and responsibilities. So it's a less desirable delivery of services and it's not actually turning up any dollar efficiencies, except for eliminating two teaching positions that aren't intrinsic to this design. Is that right?
Well, they are intrinsic to the design. They're necessary for the whole package.
Well, how are they necessary other than to turn up the savings? What am I missing?
Well, the teachers are not really contributing to the savings because you're adding a world language teacher leader at 138 and then you're reducing 127,000. So it's actually an increase to the overall savings, the teacher portion. I mean, the reason why it's not a large savings when you reduce an administrator, so the administrator ends up bumping a teacher. So the person who's out of a job is really the teacher. But the DAA contract does stipulate that that administrator keeps their salary for a full year. So you're paying a teacher position, essentially an administrator salary for a year, which is why the savings is compressed.
Okay. Where do we see that, Rich?
So part of that is where you see the inverse turnover. So inverse turnover, usually turnover is savings, right? And then this way, it's an increase in expenditure.
Thank you. Katie?
Thank you. This memo for the admin reduction is a lot of change for very little change. I have a list of questions. How does this work? Who will do evaluations? What does the org chart look like? The department chair salaries that Rich just spoke about, if they don't move into director positions, we're paying an admin salary for a teacher position. Who fills the positions? If it's the department chairs, when was the last time they were in elementary classrooms? Who even has K through 12 expertise? Do any other districts even have K through 12 directors? And what does this mean for elementary? Elementary teachers teach all subjects. Will they be reporting to four subject directors? So all of this leads me back to Mr. Brown's question. Wouldn't it be simpler and wouldn't it have done less damage to simply not implement the positions that we do not have?
Not my professional judgment, that is no, but.
John?
So this board instructed the administration to come back with their recommendation, okay? Against their will. So either we accept it or reject it, but this is our work asking the administration come with their. So that, that's the way I, I look at it. So we can reject it, but now we have to find the dollars elsewhere. Dave's gonna say.
Dave?
I appreciate that and, you know, I did acknowledge that the administration went through the work. So we're on the same page here. I guess my question was not, you know, to the damage. I think my question was really, you know, tell us the measurements, tell us the metrics, give us some data points that led you this way to that. I heard one that seemed to deal with interacting with students, which I understand. I, I didn't hear others, so if there's others, would love to know. But if that's it, then, then I appreciate it, so.
Dr. Brown, we went through the, the size of, of the high school and actually the size of the middle school. We went through the ratio of, of our IVPs and so on. So we said, we did cite the reasons at the time for the, for the model.
Got it. And I'm not second guessing at this stage. I'm just trying to understand where the drift is.
Are there specific metrics on this that you feel like we would use to measure success if we were to implement it?
It's pretty raw at the minute, to be quite honest. Katie's could, you know, outline some deficiencies with it, yeah. I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny that, that there aren't. We will try and, we will try and address those questions. We've struggled all week with the CM issues. We don't have all the answers to it, but, but we have enough to put it on the table. But there are, there are, there are real concerns about implementing this model.
Robin and then Sarah.
Just one question. I, I'm just interested to know if other Durgay schools do a K through 12 model or do most of them have, for instance, a Director of Elementary Curriculum and, you know, kind of the model that we have?
There's variations. Fairfield, I think, is the only one who has like a director, a sort of a director position.
Sorry, say that again.
Say, there are variations, but I think Fairfield's about the only one who has really the director positions of any description.
But a K through 12 position, do other districts have that?
So Fairfield does have K-12 positions. Norwalk has K-12 positions. I mean, they are far less common. Some districts will have K-8 positions and not 612 positions. In the Durg, in terms of like the Director of Elementary and its split, we have it. Westport has it and Ridgefield has it. The others don't. So there's a number of variations.
Sarah?
I'm just going to really caution. If we want to be the top or one of the top districts in terms of our curricular offerings, this is not going to solve the problem at all. I think there's a huge difference between having, especially with all the legislation that is coming down. We need, we need the two separate. But this is, this is going to hurt more than it will help.
Greg?
Just one clarif-, I thought you said, did you say that you had looked at a version of this or considered a version of this where you were consolidating department chairs versus replacing them? What, how does this, how does this look differently if you just consolidate the department chairs?
Administratively and teaching and learning point of view, we felt that we wanted to, needed to keep the academic discipline and that there's merit to that actual academic discipline and that other, putting them together that both would, both serving two masters, which it just wouldn't be served well. And actually, I mean, Dr. Fettigam is pretty vocal on what you wanted and.
What's your experience with that, Amy?
My experience with that is that they're just, the departments are so vast and different and the standards across the departments within each of those area, areas STEM and Humanities are just so distinct. It's very hard to make a continuum and trajectory of curriculum development and application of instructional strategies. So I just think it's, that just the bandwidth isn't there.
So to clarify, you're saying like across STEM, it's not there, not a STEM to Humanities with bandwidth, you're saying?
Correct, like within STEM and then within Humanities.
Thank you. Okay. Dave?
Thanks. Amy, you made me recall some of the earlier conversations we had where we were talking about world languages and whether people were experts in each individual world language. We had discussions about some of the visual and performing arts, technique for strings versus technique for painting and some of the variety of different skills that have to be taught there. But we got comfortable with making some consolidation. How, how is that different, say, you know, between some of the humanities? Why is that something we can do in some other areas, but we can't do here?
I think because of the type of standards within each of those disciplines, they're more distinct in some of those areas. There's more cross-reference in some of the areas that you mentioned. For example, within music as a discipline.
Could you elaborate a little bit on, in the humanities, an example perhaps?
Sure, for example, there are concrete science and engineering standards in, in, for science, right? If you think about general ninth grade science, the standards in mathematics are content standards and math practice standards across 13 grades.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this also lines up, I guess you could say, with the K through 12 music, visual arts model. We also have a K through 12 coordinator of technology that we've put in place. And therefore, we put in place this, this teacher K through 12. Now, it solves it, it doesn't, but it's, it provides a similar model.
Gotcha. So I think the same question somewhat, Sarah raised somewhat, not across disciplines horizontally, but vertically. Can you speak to that concern that, that elementary is super distinct from 12th and how, how that would work in one position?
Sure. So there, there is an inherent challenge in that, right? First and foremost, anyone who would be eligible for these director positions does have an O nine two certificate. So there are leadership standards that do transcend across content areas. There are distinct standards related to the content standards that are more foundational, for example, in the area of literacy that appear differently when we think about a continuum of literacy development. However, they're, at least they're all within the same body of standards, right? If you think about English language arts, there's, like Mr. Janasko referred to before, those standards are recursive, right? Same thing with mathematics. If you think about it, there are standards in pre-K and kindergarten that speak to algebraic concepts, right? But they're at least within the continuum and learning progression within that discipline. So there's a big stretch for 13 years or having students pre-K through age 22 plus, but it's at, it's at least within the same discipline. And you can see the trajectory of the learning progressions across those grades.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Joe?
Yes, Robin?
I will say, I just have, I share some of Sarah's concerns, just given the, the elementary issues in particular, and the play-based learning, the literacy K through three issues, and also the COVID learning gaps that many of our students have experienced. I think, in particular, the elementary kind of teaching piece, I think is going to be really critical. And so that is one thing that I, I would be a little concerned about this. And then also just our administrative turnover and morale. And I think we have had, you know, significant changes even in the past few months. And so I think we need to be cognizant of that as well with any kind of change that we make.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on this topic? Thank you all. Next thing we should speak about is ECR and whether or not we want to move forward with that. Julie, go ahead.
Can I just ask a process question? It would be helpful for me to understand what the 28th is going to look like. What will we be voting on? A complete program that it gets to a number, item by item? I don't, I don't know what I'm working towards. So I'm struggling.
The reason you have this is because we need to actually reallocate by line items. So if you think about when we do transfers, you can see it's going from this to that. And so we have to actually effectuate all of that movement of dollars. However, how we choose to do it is somewhat up to us. Like when we take the transfers, we often take them as a batch unless there's something that we want to isolate out and, and specifically on. So I would suggest that in the aggregate, we do have the administrative proposal. Anywhere we have, you know, reasonable agreement, we could just vote in the aggregate on the package. Or we could separate it out. We have, because we've added in this administrative question, we now have another variable that is over and above the package. So it could be that we could vote for the administrative up-down first, and then we could take the package in the aggregate if there's nothing else on the table. If Alan, what Alan is talking about comes through and there are some changes in dollars that we actually need to account for, again, there'll be other things on the table. So a little bit, we're going to have to see what comes in the coming days.
I guess that's, so I asked the question also because I wonder then, I'm questioning why we need to lock into a number right now when there are still a number of variables in the air as far as, is there something coming toward us? Is there anything else that anyone would like to propose that could be something else to be considered as an additional or different item? It feels premature to me to draw a line in the sand on the, on the ECR.
On the ECR. I, I think that maybe is a little bit different. And then I think we're still fingering the wind a little bit, but we have a pretty good idea that the number of submissions is likely to be consistent and that therefore the amount, the dollars available is likely to be consistent and deficient according to what we budgeted. So the recommendation from the business office and the superintendent is that we actually go ahead and move forward with, with handling some portion of that. Even, even the way it's structured is already a little bit conservative. It's a, right, you're, you're budgeting it at 70%, which, and right now we're receiving 66. So, so your point is well taken that there are still puts and takes. But I, I don't think that we want to leave ECR as an unknown for debating next week. I think I, we should know whether or not we're going to cover that one. And I would recommend that we, go ahead, John.
Yeah. And again, this is a recommendation from our administration to account for this in our budgeting exercise. And if you go back and look at the last five years that you, I think you asked for Julie, right?
Yep.
The average is 74.3, but you gotta, in my mind, normalize the two 80 percenters because you had lower submissions those years, as I understand it, relative throughout the state because there was kind of a COVID lag effect. If you look at the trend line or first, if you eliminate those two years, the average is 70.4 and the trend line is lower than 70. So I think it would be reckless if we didn't account for an adjustment, fully knowing the new information there. I don't want to start my first finance committee meeting with Rich projecting, you know, 66% reimbursement and we're already in a hole.
Dave?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up to that. I think when you take out the outliers and you, you know, look at the normal, normalized run rate, certainly makes sense and would be the reasonable thing to do at this time. I appreciate that in some ways, we're kind of soft circling this number. It won't be firm until the 28th. But I think it's smart for us to, in good board practice, to act on all information in front of us at the time we make a decision, which we would be doing by encompassing that number.
Katie?
I'm inclined to agree with Julie on this. You know, taking out those two 80% years still leaves us with last year returning to the town, you know, 800 some thousand dollars. And here we have a $734,000 surplus. Last year, we got back more than 700,000 than we were expecting. And that, that wasn't COVID, that wasn't 80% year. The fact is, we just don't know. It's a huge variable.
Can I just, sorry, just two other points to add. The, the piece that I question is if the state would make more funds available because they did that this past year, right? Because the submissions were so significantly.
It was voted down recently to add funds to.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And then just the other point that I'm struggling with is that we are talking about cutting or eliminating known things in favor of unknown things. And that's, that's hard to wrap it around.
But.
Go ahead, John.
If these funds don't come through, we have to cut. And our business office is telling us, and again, if you kind of take out the outliers and look at this year, not last year, you know, the reimbursement rate is, is down. And so I certainly, you know, and it's known out there. This is no secret, you know, our other government partners are watching. And so if we start, you know, with a aggressive 75% assumption, I think it, that's we're not, we're shirking our responsibility to budget correctly.
Well, I would argue that we didn't make our partners, that we didn't inform our partners that we were facing this before we received our cut from the Board of Finance. And so I don't know that they would have cut us as deep as they did if they knew that we were already looking at a half a million dollar.
They, they did know that excess costs had come in. We did talk about that on the first, when we submitted the budget.
But did we submit all of, I don't believe we submitted a full number to them, 453,000?
We did not submit a formal number, but we had a discussion about excess cost. But I understand your point.
And there are also other changes, like census changes that are, or have become there since.
And health insurance and there's a $6,000 solve. We've typed it. It feels like we are budgeting it so incredibly leanly and assuming all the risk ourselves. And that just seems like more than is reasonable.
Well, that, that's our responsibility to budget for the schools. And these are, if we were to go back with a shortfall, it's a special appropriation. So again, if you look at our statutory responsibility, it's to budget for the schools. And our business office is telling us that he feels comfortable or the office feels comfortable and our superintendent would, using a 70% number on this, given recent history.
Okay, thank you. Okay. With that, I'll move over to.
Can I just say something, one more thing? It is very important we come to a number so we can all prioritize what our lists are. For example, if more savings come through, based on what I heard last night, I wouldn't support these administrative cuts right now. I think that falls to the bottom of the list in my mind. But I don't know what, I need to know what number we go to as we go through this new reallocation. Because then we're, if we're working to different numbers, it's like herding cats. It's very critical that we come to a number tonight.
Because I'm unclear where the flexibility is. If we're not talking about making any adjustments in how we're budgeting for ECR, then how does the number change from what was put in front of us?
Our superintendent just said there are, what, 200 to 300,000 dollars in savings that we don't.
We don't know that right now. So. So, okay, so I don't, what I, I think, we're not coming to a 2.4 because we know there's more variability and plus we added our own variability. So I'm not asking anyone to agree to 2.4. I think what we wanted to come to is, and I may have misspoken, I think what we wanted to come to is whether or not we're going to accommodate the, or excuse me, make our own adjustments for ECR. So I think that's the decision in front of us at the moment because there are other things that will affect the final total we need to get.
I think that's the, I think that, I think you did misspeak a little bit. That's what we need to decide. Are we covering ECR or not? The rest of it is what it is and we will know more by the 28th.
I mean, we have our appropriation. We know a number we have to come to. That's the number we have to come to. Right now, it's 2.43 difference as the administration outline guys. So we know a number we have to come to.
Okay.
That's the approved appropriation by the Board of Finance.
No, I understand. Okay. Going back to the way it was originally outlined, are there any questions on the retirements and resignations and that, that section of? I'm on the original memo. If you want a second to open that up. No. Okay. Any questions on the enrollment driven changes that were proposed? Katie?
I don't have a question here. I, I think that we have been going over this for months. I will just reiterate that I still have the same concerns about, about cutting teachers and deteriorating the team model.
If I may, Madam Chair, just, just in full transparency, an update on just where we are with the middle school. I had reported three, three, three and three. There is a consideration to go three, three and four. I think the teachers would like the four. That makes the eighth grade, which is a bigger, bigger class, smaller class sizes. So that's just on the table right now, the three there or the, or the four. So we're just, I just wanted to share, it doesn't change the team model, but.
So just clarifying, you are in the, you're still working with the scheduling consultant. That person is still reviewing the, the data for all of our students, including the, the makeup, the number, et cetera. And, and your process, you're undergoing an iterative process where you're looking at different models based on student.
Let it be three, three, three or three, three, four at this point. It's not going to fall out of those.
Okay. Other questions on the enrollment driven changes? Questions on the non-certified staff? Questions on in-sourcing? Questions on revenue? John?
So at the last meeting, I think we asked for a figure that would not require, let's say, participants with already mandatory facility fees to, to also on top of those facility fees paid for the participation fee. So what would that impact?
If you were to do away with rental fees, that would cost $140,000. So if you were to do the $200 per sport, but not to, you know, the rental fees, you're looking at $160,000 instead of the 297.
297 versus 160. And then the other, the other.
Yeah, say that again.
So if you were to not charge anything for rental fees, which right now are that 70, 30 split, we collect about $140,000. So that would go away. And then in place of the 297, so you would charge the 290, the $200 per sport, but then you'd lose 140,000. So then, you know, the net is roughly 160.
And I guess the other derivation, I think that was asked if, so we, we maintain the participation fees except for the teams that have to pay those rental fees. Do you know what that?
That I did know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, you know, in certain cases, you're, we're saddling, you know, significant costs on top of, you know, you're double, you're double charging some of these things.
Rich, while you're doing that, can you also do a different variation of that? Like if you had everybody paid 250, what that would do and take off?
So just one time?
Just one time, per sport. No, like say what you have here, but per season, if it's 250, whatever.
Oh, so, so same.
Instead of the 200, bump it up to 250 and see what that looks like. Please. Okay. So the things we've asked for are number one, we want a model that takes out rental fees. So the 140. Two, we want a model that charges all sports except those that pay rental fees who will continue to pay the same rate. And three, a model that just increases the base price to 250. Are you doing anything with the rental fees? Yeah, I would like to see both. Like if, if it was 150 or I want to see both, both options. It's with 250 instead of the 200. Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Sarah wants to see all three scenarios run with $250.
Okay, more. Okay, got it.
Okay. Katie?
I, I really feel that a lot of these conversations are redundant, but I think when we're talking about double dipping, this tax is already that. Parents are already paying for protective equipment and parents are already paying for optional fees. So there's, there's no eliminating, there's no making it a one-time fee for parents of athletes because they're already paying two and three fees.
Not mandatory though. That was my point.
Dave?
I know we're supposed to be just asking questions, but real quick, I don't support the 200 or 250 and, you know, would really love this board to have a broader conversation about funding for athletics.
Julie?
Thank you. I guess this is the best place to bring this up, but I, I am still interested in seeing some sort of recommendation on how we could reduce or eliminate some expense out of the athletics RC. We made a cut to it in our process and that just became a deferral on the uniform replacement cycle. So it's just coming back to us next year. This RC is up 10% in operating costs. It's just, it's not sustainable. And I think the solution to charge parents, while I guess it's easy to, to make that happen, like mechanically, I, I really think we need to be trying to find a way to cut something from here. It's, it's, it's growing too rapidly and we're not scrubbing it well enough, in my opinion. I'm interested if anyone else is interested in seeing something like that.
Katie?
I would love to see. I mean, I said during the budget season that RC 11 needed something to be looked at and nothing came back. I would love to see it.
Robin? Can I, I just want to ask a little bit of a different question because this participation fee solely focuses on student athletes. And I know that in the past, there was a situation, I think this was before 2013, when the Board of Ed did a flat student activity fee, which covered athletics, clubs, intramurals. But it was a flat fee regardless of how many activities or sports each student did. I'm curious how much that was charged per student and what amount of revenue was raised under that model? Because that was a precedent that the board did when they had a budget shortfall. And I, I don't even, I don't know the numbers, but given, we do have feedback. I think student athletes are feeling that they are being a bit targeted here with this fee. And there are a lot of other activities or sports And there are a lot of other activities in our schools that also cost money as well. So I just want to make that point and ask for that data. I think that might be helpful. Or if there's a, a mixed model perhaps where we don't have to charge the athletes as much, and maybe we just have a flat fee, just if you participate in a club, you pay a $50 thing. And I don't, I don't know what that number is, but I think it would be more equitable potentially if we're going to go down this route.
Rich, did you look at that? Sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry, go ahead, Madam Chair.
Did, did you look at that? A, a flat fee across activities or did you just, guys just really?
So there is nobody, at least in Fairfield County, that does like a general student activity fee. I don't, we would have to look back. I don't know if it was ever implemented in 2013. We'd have to see, um, if we can find any records.
I think it was prior to that, but I, I don't know the exact amount of data.
So the, the recommendations that came back here regarding RC 11, uh, tried to stay within the sort of philosophy of not impacting student programs, no matter what the programs were. Because honestly, I still feel as if the programs that up and down the system, I understand people's concerns, but I do not believe it's going to impact the student's program and that we've done. So this was the scope that we came back with. It may not be the right one, um, but the board wants us to look at it again, but we tried to avoid eliminating programs, eliminating a sport, uh, uh, cuts, no cuts, uh, the number of coaches. So we tried, anyway, that was the philosophy. That's why we didn't come back with a, a particular cut to a program. We can, um, or some reduction in RC 11 further. We certainly could do that if that's what the board wants us to look at.
Julie and then Katie?
I, it just, as I said last week, there are things added that are new to RC 11 for next year. That's, that's not cutting if we're just not adding, I guess, is, is would be my argument. And I, I just, just again to say, we're, this, what's on the table eliminates somewhere between nine and 11 in the classroom, directly student-facing personnel. And I, I just think to do the due diligence, we need to take another look at athletics.
Are you talking about the teachers when you say nine to 11 or?
I'm talking about teachers and instructional aides, the folks who are being removed from the classrooms.
I do, I do think there's a distinction between, uh, the capacity and the teachers.
No, I understand. My, my point is we are eliminating direct student-facing curricular educational individuals. And I think we need to also take a real hard look at RC 11 and see if there's anything that we can find there.
Okay, Katie, Dave, John?
I couldn't agree with Julie more. You might not consider instructional aides a program, but they 100% are student-impact. And I, I agree when we talk about our values, our budget shows our values. And right now it's showing a skew. Robin, to your point about, um, activities, also, I, I just want to remind the board that, that we don't fund clubs. You know, the, the middle school quiz bowl team that went to Chicago and did one, like they pay for that on their own, they paid for it.
I was talking about advisor stipends, that's the only.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, this is a lot. I'll, I'll stop there. I think it was Dave and John.
Jill, can I just make one? I don't think any of this is palatable, and I'm only raising these points because we obviously have to cut 2.4 million dollars. And none of us voted for this when we voted on our budget in February. So I just want to make clear that even though we're talking about this, I don't think any of us really are enjoying bringing up any of these things. And so I, I just want to make sure that we're kind of putting things on the table and having a reasonable discussion and getting the data and, and the questions that we need answered.
Yes, I think that's a, an important point to make, Robin, that this is not enjoyable for anyone.
Nor is it our desire.
Dave?
Yeah, I just, was kind of a point of information. I think we're talking about the 290,000 and you said that's nine to 11 teachers. We pay them 29,000 each ballpark. Like I didn't follow your number there. How do you get to 11 teachers for 290 grand?
Not 11 teachers, I said nine to 11 in the classroom individuals. So it's five classroom, no, almost five. Um, and the enrollment-driven changes, the non-certified staff is five individuals. And then we added another middle school Spanish teacher, middle school English teacher to the list.
So the non-cert, okay. I thought you were talking about teachers in, in general.
No, no, sorry. I just, in classroom folks.
Cool, thanks.
John?
Uh, I was just, I thought you were talking teachers too.
I've misspoken, I'm sorry.
And, uh, we do had prior to this 40 teachers that weren't teaching five sections, so.
Sarah, um, shifting the conversation a little bit, going to the meal, raising the meal price. Rich, can you also model what it looks like to raise it by a dollar, not just 50 cents? Thank you.
Okay, uh, Katie, then Robin?
Thank you, I remember the other thing I wanted to say. I'm curious if we have looked at athletics in other ways that can reduce the budget expenditure without cutting programming. There was a coach who suggested or highlighted a model from another school that, um, freshman sports not be eliminated, but that the transportation not being incurred by the district. That there's a model where freshman sports are their own category and that are parent-driven. Those are the, and I'm not, those are the types of things that I think we need to be thinking creatively. Like how can we provide for our students and, and make significant impact? Because when we look at athletics, when we look at per-team costs, transportation is the major driver, even for those sports that only have the lowest per athlete expenditure. Transportation is thousands and thousands of dollars. So, so those are the kind of discussions that I think that we have not had. And I, I know that we have a lot to discuss here, and I know that everyone's tensions are running high, but I do think that we might be a little more productive if we can try to stick to, you know, Julie raised the question about athletics. If, if there's not an appetite by the majority of the board, so be it, but I'm, I'm not sure that we close that out.
I, I, yeah, I, I think it's hard in, in that I, I'm not sure. Are you looking for a freeze on, on the, on the account from last year?
I'm, I'm looking for a recommendation from the administration on where we could eliminate or reduce some costs in the athletic, athletics RC.
Okay, Greg then, Dave?
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, within that RC, I would just say that it would, I think that there's probably a better way to do it in terms of looking for revenue opportunities as opposed to getting rid of, you know, student-facing activity opportunities. Now, I, I know that folks, parents who are, who have athletic students are already burdening a lot of the costs on behalf of our school system already. And so, you know, cutting stuff or asking them for more, I think is, I, I think is less favorable than saying, okay, can we raise more money in different ways and generate more revenue?
Uh, when you say generate more revenue, are you talking about fees or are you talking about another kind of revenue?
No, not, not charging for participation. This would be like charging more for people to attend events, that sort of.
So I, I definitely appreciate that. And we, we did raise, I think, the, the ticket prices. But in terms of this year and what we need to do this year, um, we have to move the needle in a pretty significant way. And so are you talking about significant revenue?
Yeah, I don't know, there are creative ways to come, that we can come up with to generate that revenue.
Yeah. Dave?
I'll be quick, John. Uh, I just quickly, piggybacking on Katie, piggybacking on Greg, repeating the comment I've made a couple of times, like, we really need to look at this and like how we sweep accounts and how teams are controlled. I think the Board of Ed really needs to be the backstop to make sure we have the program in there for all students without putting a tax on, on what we provide. But I think we have some disincentives built into how we manage those accounts right now for teams that can be an interesting part of a solution, kind of like was mentioned for the trip to Chicago. So I welcome the opportunity with my fellow board members to look at this more holistically, probably not for the next, between now and the 28th, but hopefully we can have that conversation.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I mean, I was just kind of along Dave's lines, like we're throwing spaghetti against the wall at this point, trying to find, uh, you know, 2.4 million dollars or give or take. You know, we again asked administration for recommendations, they've come with a list. We all, hopefully that list now has yielded excess savings, if you will, or efficiencies that we can prioritize. But to create, um, new efficiencies at this point is going to be pretty, we're going to have to hustle, I guess, and they gotta be reasonable dollars. I mean, Greg, we, we charge for two events, I believe, basketball and football. And we've already raised the football prices at the dirty ball. I mean, we're talking minimal dollars. I mean, we're, we need to be finding like hundreds of thousands of dollars. I will say, you know, we, the participation fee was a way of kind of counteracting those rising costs in RC 11. And it comes to officiating, it comes to other elements that were the big drivers. We postponed uniforms. So we've kind of picked on that in my mind, uh, line item already alongside some, some, uh, fees. So we're kind of going off target and I, I get why we're doing it because we don't like what we're doing for Robin's point, but there's got to be meaningful suggestions at this point. And I don't hear any meaningful suggestions. I feel like, again, we're throwing spaghetti at all of us.
Anyone else want to comment on this one? Okay. So in terms of this, um, RC 11, the proposals on the table are to throw it to administration and ask them to come up with something to recognize that we need to do something, but to ask for that to happen post this two-week period. And that includes, it looks like, um, continuing to explore revenue. Is there any appetite for specific work on RC 11 right now? Maybe administration can comment before I close this conversation out.
All I can say, if, if you would, you want us to look at it, we'll look at it. I'm a I don't know what else to say, to be honest.
I just want to keep in mind that the, anything that is student activity, given the mental health issues that we have in our district, clubs, extracurricular sports, I, I really don't want to take away anything that would potentially prevent students from being able to find a team or have the support from coaches to be able to play on a team. I, I just think it's so important right now. I don't want to, I don't want to disrupt that. So I think we have to be really careful about any cuts we would make in that area. But that's all I have.
I am more inclined to cha- charge fees than I am to cut, though I am more than happy to, um, take a look at some of the ways that it's run and post this two-week period, simply because I, I don't anticipate being able to come up with meaningful efficiencies in two weeks in, in operational, in the operational sense. Julie, go ahead.
Um, so I appreciate that. And I guess I would say that then I think there's a lot of work to be done in this area over the next year, leading up to the next budget season, because we're only kicking the can down the road. And we can't raise, you know, we can't just keep raising fees that we're going to charge our parents to try to make it affordable. We can't just keep postponing the uniform cycle and just promise me that we won't call it a deep dive and I'm there and ready to do the work.
Okay.
But
Go ahead, John.
I, I've been on this board and I've watched this board for years. Every, we've addressed it numerous times, what are we looking to do? But we don't have to answer that tonight, but that's the key.
And I think we're now, but to your point, I've also been having this conversation for years. We are now at a point where our budget is at a point and our co, our expenses are at a point where we are going to have to make some much harder decisions than we have in the past. And to me, that comes in the extracurricular aspect, not academics, and that's RC 11 to me.
The only thing I caveat with is that I think given the number of difficult years ahead of us, probably a lot of difficult decisions.
Absolutely.
And we have to, we definitely are going to have to budget differently next year.
Yeah, to, to your question of do you want this to happen now, I, I would rather, I don't like charging parents, but I would rather charge parents next year and have a more robust, thoughtful conversation and expecting to see something else coming out of RC 11 next year.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the conversation. All right. Katie?
Alan, for the athlete tax, um, is that something that you envision being a one-year-only and will be revisited? Or is that something that you see, um, instituting permanently?
If I have any experience from prior districts, uh, once you implement it, it tends to stay. But the board could, like, the board could send a prerogative to change anything, but I, I, it's a hard one to, to turn back.
Questions on equipment? Other than excess costs, questions on the post-budget increases? Dave? Thank you.
Just a question to Rich, any changes to this memo since you produced on the 7th?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Brenna, feel free.
Yeah, if you need to go, go.
It's, it's funny past town.
Yeah. Yeah.
Brenna, go.
Yes, bye. Have a good night.
We're, we're all leaving at 10:30, so.
Yes, yes, we need to. Okay. All right, so do we have what we need for the moment in terms of the contents of this memo? Are there any, any other questions that are not covered at this point? Okay. Thank you. I will repeat, this is not a conversation anybody is excited to undertake. We are talking about students and families and staff. And it is uncomfortable. Some of this is some lessons we've had to learn about budgeting tighter. And hopefully there's some things that we can do. But, uh, certainly, nobody takes this lightly.
Madam Chair, if I may say, just, um, and I think it's probably speaking to us, it's important that if there's other meetings that we've, we have to come to, that's fine. But I would just say it's nearly critical that we put this to rest by the 28th because I, I have administrators now looking like, I may not be, I may not be able to fill some positions by the time we get to the 28th.
I think the board is very interested in having this completed by the 28th for everyone's mental health.
Thank you.
Uh, as well as just operational needs. Okay. Then I'll move on to further discussion on school start times. Alan and Rich at all are going to walk through, um, quickly what we've already come up, what they've come up, the research they've done. What we'd like to do at the end of this is identify if there's any other information that folks need in order to properly consider this. And then what we will do is in about six weeks, when we take a look at our, I'm ballparking six weeks, but when we take a look at the priorities for the coming year, this will be in the list and we'll see where this goes vis a vis the other operational priorities that we also have to balance. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to, um.
Look, I'll, I'll be brief, Madam Chair, because, um.
Yes.
It's, it's Wilton Greenwich, uh, New Canaan had implemented it and Weston and Ridgefield, who tabled it after some discussion. And you can sort of see, I want to thank my colleagues at least for, uh, responding back to me and giving me some candid sort of feedback type thing. You can see that, um, in some cases, they, they just changed the high school schedule. And because of middle school, or sorry, elementary school, the issues that came along with elementary school. In essence, there were, there was anywhere from a million dollars to $3 million in, in costs. Greenwich, for instance, did this, uh, hybrid thing flex at the end of the day that hasn't worked with faculty and so on and so forth. And the kids getting out of school. I should say, uh, hasn't worked as well as they may have hoped for at the time, and they're revisiting that. So to the, uh, the idea of just right across the board that you can count on people being on both sides of this is going to polarize the community. If I took that from all the communities, I think that, that's a common thing. But that's not anything that we don't know per se. Richard ran the numbers for, for the buses for us, if, if we were, uh, changing the high school schedule. You can see what those are, those are in a million-dollar range. Those, though, though, I mean, those are the big, I'd be happy to field questions. Those are the big takeaways in terms of, uh, from the, the surrounding districts, just some of the variables. And the board wanted just to, can you just give us a wee look at this first of all, and to see if we want to?
This was very helpful, thank you. Yeah.
Just as a, a clarifying question, what would the dismissal time be for Darian High School with this change?
Well, we would be starting at basic, basically an hour later, 50 minutes later, so it'll be 50 minutes later than, than where we are right now. So you're, you're going to three o'clock or so.
3:10?
A little before 3:00.
Because that's 10 minutes after, before.
About three o'clock or so.
Okay.
Does anyone else have questions, um, or clarifications on what's in the memo?
Am I just reading this right?
That, that the first, the, the pickup time for all the elementary schools would be 6:41 AM.
So a lot of reasons why districts tend not to flip is you end up having your youngest kid standing outside for the bus in the dark, um, which is why when they do implement it, it does cost a lot of money because then you're not flipping those, um, those times. And then the other issue for a kindergarten student, there has to be somebody who greets the student to come off the bus, whether it's the parent or maybe an older brother or sister. The older sibling might not be available and depending on if the parents work, they may not be available.
Robin?
The only, one of the other things that I thought was important to note would be the impact on staff and commutes because that would push it probably about an hour later into peak rush hour traffic, which I think would probably impact a lot of our staff as well, which did happen with Greenwich.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
So I think that's a consideration as well. In addition to the impact on sports, after school extracurriculars, if we got out basically an hour later and how, especially for travel sports, travel teams, would that mean that they would have to be dismissed early from school in order to get to those events, which I know did happen in some of the other schools. I think Wilton had that experience as well. So there are pieces of this that I think, um, would potentially disrupt students as well as staff to, I think it raises a question of, are you really getting the extra sleep or is this going to create more, some more difficulties for people too?
Thank you. Okay. Katie?
I just want to say that I appreciate the, the range of experiences, um, but that I think that it would be very important to understand some of the growing pains and issues that people had. Um, I have a feeling that implementation is a big part of it as well. Um, you know, this, this kind of memo and the varying experiences reminds me a bit like Disney. Some people love it and have a great experience. Some people hate it and want to forget about it. And a lot of that comes down to, you know, how, how it's kind of prepared for. So I would just say that I think, um, I think that the cautionary tales in here are good for us to pay attention to, but that we should go into this thinking about how to avoid them, not just that it's a foregone conclusion to either go smoothly or go horribly.
Yeah, the nuances and the context with it, with, with my colleagues described it, uh, aren't captured here because it's hard and I also want to be respectful of, um, but, uh, go in with your eyes wide open. And having gone through this myself, I would say that because, uh, uh, it's just a lot to it and implementation, so our execution on us is, is significant too.
Okay. Sarah?
So I appreciate all the information. Thank you for pulling it together. I, my question is next steps. Where do we go from here?
So this, um, barring any additional information, we will have, again, something in the next four to six weeks, we'll need to sit down, I think, and look at all the large scale operational priorities the district has in front of it.
And Alan, are you ready to do that in four to six weeks?
Yes.
Well, it'll depend how many, I mean, this sounds sarcastic, it's not meant to be. It depends administrators and also where we are with it. There's a lot on the plate right now, right?
So that's, I think, what we want to identify is, I'm not asking for a strat plan in the next four to six weeks because I think that one of the things that we do is we ask you to come up with a plan before we really identified the priorities. So I think we need an interim step where we take a look at those priorities before we, you guys go and do all the work to develop it. Okay, so in the next four to six weeks, let's take a look from a high level of the workload that you're looking at so we can prioritize from there.
Can I just raise the question, just because this would be more than a million dollar cost per year, given the budget constraints right now that we're already struggling with? I just question whether this is something that we should be talking about at this point in time.
That's why we have to see what else there is, right? So.
All right.
That is, I think, part of the priority discussion, absolutely. Thank you. So I think that's probably an important component is when we look at the priorities, what's the level of effort and what's the cost?
Okay.
Thank you for raising it. Okay. Further discussion and possible action on proposed revisions to board policies, and I will not read them all, but March.
Um, so unfortunately, we don't have the 10:30 rule about starting another agenda item, but, um, so 9160, uh, the, uh, policy committee would like the board to discuss. You can see there are two versions of the policy, one which provides for filling the seat of a vacancy by an unaffiliated voter who's a board member and one that leaves the policy. It makes the other changes that Shipman and Goodwin requested, but does not deal with unaffiliated board members.
Okay. Each one, sure. Well, and what's the other one?
You have a point on this one? Yeah. So I, I think Dave and I were in agreement that, you know, we might not want to pigeonhole ourselves to unaffiliated. And the reasoning, I'm going to say my reasoning is that in, in certain cases, an unaffiliated vote, uh, uh, member might caucus or, um, be supported by a political party. We wouldn't want to pigeonhole an unaffiliated to another unaffiliated should a vacancy arise. And that, that's kind of my thought process. Um, state statute doesn't have anything, of course, you have minority representation rules that would, you know, limit the number of the majority, um, you know, on, on this board to six to one party or the other. But I didn't want to have to, if we had an unaffiliated leave, attended the caucus with one party or the other, you wouldn't want to stymie, um, the board from picking somebody that might be affiliated with a party.
Dave?
Thanks. Um, yeah, so just a slight nuance. So I always read May consult here, uh, as being the important part. It's basically granted permission to whoever that chair is that, coming out of the normal board event where we act impartially, you now have an opportunity to reach out to partisan parties and consult. The one question I had here in reading this updated language, Marge, which I see in both versions, uh, it concludes, provided that any such consultation shall not be binding on the board. I don't know what that means. So what does it mean, the consultation? How's the board bound by that? What is the scope of that? Like, the DTC says we really want Ted. Like, we don't have to talk to Ted. Like, I don't know where that goes after that.
So then that language was added because the board chair has, does not have the ability to bind the board. So the board chair can consult with the town committees, but then the board chair has to come back and the action has to be taken.
So that was part of the confusion, that was my understanding too. So there's really creating confusion by including this, it probably should be struck.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would, I would put a period where the comma is after vacancy and strike the remainder would be my suggestion.
Agreed.
Sarah? Um, so in our policy committee meeting, I disagreed with John and Dave. Um, I think if there is a, an unaffiliated member of the Board of Education that joined the board as an unaffiliated member, that they should be replaced with someone that is a U, as that was the will of the electorate to elect an unaffiliated voter. That was my thinking behind that.
Julie?
Um, and just to add also back to the minority representation, the majority representation is obviously going to have the upper hand replacing any U with a candidate potentially of their choosing, which may or may not fall in line to Sarah's point with the will of the electorate.
Dave?
Just one thought on the will of the electorate. That's fine if it's a U initially elected, but what if you have a DRR who subsequently becomes a U?
We talked about that in policy, that you would replace it with, so say I'm Democrat, I change to a U, I left, you would have to replace it with a D.
Right. And what happens if a U switches to a DR?
Then you replace with an unaffiliated. Whatever you were elected as is what gets replaced.
Right, but we don't have a way to do that because it's a U. You can't, you can't call the U party because there is no U party office.
Right, but the way we did it, you could, but we didn't pull from, in our, in the most recent situation, we could interview anybody. We can find candidates without sourcing them.
We don't need the parties to give us. This is a policy committee, anybody not on the policy committee, because the policy may split. Robin, Greg, Katie?
We need help.
Sure. I'm, I'm inclined to agree that the elected party should remain.
Okay, doesn't.
What do you mean? He was not a party, so is that, is that, that's, that's. Well, it's an affiliation or not affiliation. So if you are not affiliated, then that should remain, that it's not affiliated. As my understanding is, unaffiliated voters are the largest majority in this town anyway, so it shouldn't be a problem. Greg and Robin?
I'm thinking about it.
Wait, so Katie, you're saying the, if you join as unaffiliated and then you do change at some point, if you vacate, then it would be filled with an unaffiliated? Is that what you're agreeing with?
Whatever the original designation is or lack thereof remains with the seat.
You replace with X.
Yeah, but so how?
And also, like, have we ever had someone change party midterm?
No.
Pretty.
I guess just like mechanically, like, I guess to their point, like, how does, how does that work? If it's an unaffiliated party, like, how are you?
We would do what we did last time.
You send it out through the PTO, so through the board of ed.
It was the same process that we, yeah, went through in September. And this is, no one else has this language, right? That this was written specifically for us, no other boards are using.
I don't know that no other boards, but it's not in Shipman's model policy. But Shipman was concerned that we didn't deal with the unaffiliated, so I can't say that it won't end up. Also, I know that it says further discussion and possible action, but I think this is the first meeting of the board, so to the extent you want to ask questions, if I can get additional answers.
Yeah, I would be curious to know if, um, we are, if there are, like, if Pullman and Comey recommends anything specific around unaffiliated, because they, they, I've seen a lot of their research. I'd be curious to know what Kate recommends on this.
I, I'd be interested in what other dirks also do. I mean, do they leave it with the basic policy that was the original one that doesn't even mention unaffiliated?
It would just say the state statute only deals with parties, doesn't deal with unaffiliated, so that was my other thought during our committee, like.
I just don't get to be careful, but we, the unaffiliated population is growing significantly, so chances are in the next, I don't know how many years, that we may very well be sitting next to an unaffiliated, but I don't know.
If I may, uh, that's why the May consult is in there, because we don't want someone to be like, you're not allowed to go talk to them because you're on the other team or like.
Right.
We just don't, yeah, you're totally can go out and check. That's why, that's why we have something more than just a model policy to make that point clear.
But the two of you were in agreement on, I'm forgetting it now, what you had said you were in agreement on exactly.
We've been in agreement on everything tonight.
Unaffiliated, not to include the language on the unaffiliated.
Not to include it.
Stick, stick with bare bones with state statute.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let's, uh.
Marge is going back to find some more information.
So.
We don't have to decide, we're, it's not a vote tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Filling vacancies, uh, March, as you were.
Okay, so 9310, and, and I apologize, it's been a long week. I, I didn't make the change that the policy committee asked, so I will for the next time. But I think what we decided was that public comment would be limited to three minutes. The rest of the language should be struck that limits any particular subject matter to a maximum, but that gives the board the opportunity to change the three limit rule depending on people in the audience. So I'll make that change for the next time, if everyone's in agreement.
Um, and if, if we do that, we need a, a process for doing that. Like, we'd have to have people sign in or something so that we have a common. Okay. Any questions on that one?
9340, construct, there's nothing, there was nothing controversial at the committee level for 9340, construction and posting of agenda?
Okay.
So then 9320, and again, I apologize, but I think I made all the other changes. The policy committee is recommending that board meetings start at 7:30 and at 10:30 there needs to be a vote in order to continue with any agenda items.
You're here.
And it's set at 10:30.
I don't know whether, oh, sorry.
Dave?
Just to make sure, so if we get to 10:30, Chair Razor's hand says, do we want to keep going or like we conclude what we're doing? And then it's 10:45 and then we see if we want to go forward? Just questioning how this works.
I think it says start a new agenda item.
Start a new agenda, okay, perfect.
Katie?
Um, I just want to clarify that the, that it's written in that it would have to be a vote to continue, not the other way around. I thought when we originally talked about it, that it was a potential vote to end then. So is that, is that written in that way that the assumption is that it will end at 10:30, barring a majority vote wanting to continue? Because it, it kind of puts the onus on the other side. That's what I'm questioning.
So all regular meetings will begin at 7:30 and shall adjourn no later than 10:30 unless extended to a time certain by a two-thirds vote of the board members present.
Yes, I, I kind of read that as like a double change from where we're at, right? Not just that we're giving ourselves the option to end it at 10:30 if we need to, but that we're saying we must end at 10:30 unless we take action to keep going. Was, was that intentional by anyone on the policy?
I would say yes.
Yes, absolutely.
That's the whole point.
Yeah, I get, I think I would have gone the other way, but that's me.
Can I, just one, one question. And this kind of gets back to public comment because that, when I looked at the other policies on the other dirks, it didn't seem like they had public comment at the end of the meeting. Is that something, because I don't know how that would impact this discussion as well if we're continuing to have public comment at the end of a meeting.
We, it was public comment at the beginning and the end was put into place back in, like, 13, 14.
At both, both in the beginning and at the end.
Yes, because we used to allow people to comment after every agenda item.
Okay.
And so we formalized it and in order to, uh, accommodate what people were used to, we added in the beginning and the end.
Okay, it just had to do with end time, that's the only reason I.
Yeah, it's a fair point. It's a fair point. Um, Marge, would you please just look at language? I understand that, that we want to end at 10:30. I'm certainly feeling it now, but would you please look at language that just if we, the inverse, that we would vote to whatever Katie said? Stop.
So rather than vote to continue, it would be we'd have to vote to stop at 10:30?
Yeah. Okay. Just so we have that available.
Same thing, guys, but it's very similar.
Well, it's not though, because then it just assumes that everyone, we're, we're going through the end of whatever. We'll talk about it next time. Yeah. Dave?
Just a quick question. We're doing kind of the beginning, I think this came up in the meeting, I'm not remembering right now at the moment, but did we have a conversation about whether districts do the end only versus the beginning only or the requirement there? Can we do a little digging on that?
I don't remember having the discussion.
Okay.
We don't believe we discussed it.
No.
It's kind of varied.
There's no requirement.
There's, I know there's no requirement either way, but are there, any, is there anybody who does only at the conclusion?
Oh.
Versus opening public comment?
Got it.
That, that was the ask.
Got it. And I, I didn't know if you. Okay.
I don't, I don't know that there's anything particularly, um, discussion worthy, except there, we did add language to the graduation requirements. Somehow Shipman and Goodwin, when they revised their model policy, they dropped the language that talks about graduation requirements are X unless modified either by a PPT or 504. So that language has been added and it'll be added back to Shipman and Goodwin's model policy.
Okay. So these will come back for a vote next time. Personnel report, Marge.
So we do, we do have resignations and retirements. I'm just waiting for the personnel report to make sure that everyone has told people who need to be told. Um, and I know that you saw that another administrator resigned, and I will say that the exit interviews have been consistent. The commute is part of it, but the number of meetings and the demands of the community are something that everyone talks about when they make.
Teachers and administrators?
Teachers, different kinds of meetings and, and demands. I mean, teachers not meetings as much as demands, I would say.
Dave?
Well, not every district has gone through 2013 with special education. And so we do things differently and we should do things differently, but it's different than in other districts. So there's more time that people are spent, are spending in PPTs and the community is demanding. I mean, it's a lot of engaged parents and no one wants people not to be engaged. As a matter of fact, one of our newer administrators was like, whoa, you know, I didn't realize how engaged parents could be, but it just takes up a lot more time than it does.
One quick follow-up to the first, you mentioned it was the meetings around PPTs and other work there. Are there other meetings that teachers are saying, or is that the full scope?
PPTs and 504s are administrators. I mean, you know, teachers are always concerned about being pulled for meetings because they want to be with their students, but they also need to attend PPC, PPTs and 504s.
Okay. Thanks, Marge.
Public comment?
If anybody in person would like to participate in public comment, please come up to the podium and wait for the chair to recognize you. If anybody online would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon. Please state your name and address for the record and you will have up to three minutes to comment. Please note the time with the chair. We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn. That's John, seconded by Julie, and that is unanimous. I thank you all for your work this evening.